Are you trusted?
No, I don't think so. I mean, yes and no. Not trusting my ear. That's weird. What else is your connection is not fine?
Now we can't try that. It says I can't. Shut down. I'm just putting this in. Yep, I'm doing it now. It didn't work on last year either. So I couldn't even work.
Yeah, it's not moving. This might be in that pop up thing.
Yeah, same.
Yeah, you're not getting the pop up. Yeah, I'm not getting the pop up either.
Sometimes it picks me up.
But it acts like it's connected.
Yeah, I waited the whole meeting last week for it to pop up. It just never stopped. Maybe it's a key thing, I wonder, because I might not. I wasn't even getting it. I wasn't even getting that part.
I use Chrome.
Do you want to go to Chrome?
That's fine. It's a fashion.
I'm ready.
You're good.
Six thirty, we are officially in session. So, welcome back, everybody, to our first meeting of the new school year. And first up tonight, we have Tracy Novick from MAS C who is going to give us seventy-on-seventy presentation on school finances. So, Tracy, take it away.
Good evening. It's good to be with you all. Thank you for having me. And you've got all kinds of big doings. It's good to be here, good to get to meet your new superintendent. Welcome. This will also be a good grounding for you, because Massachusetts, of course, has a particularly, well, complicated, but complicated because that's part of what makes it as accurate and progressive as it is, a school finance system. I did, I'm glad to be here, not just because I think that the more people who understand how the school finance system works, the better, but also because, as some of you know, part of my job, in addition to handling school finance for MAS C, is I'm also the person who sends out the daily newsletter, some of you may get the Daily Ed. And because of that, is this not on?
It just needs to be closed, yeah.
Because of my putting together the Daily Ed, that means that I'm constantly keeping appraised of everybody's news, which means that, yes, my Daily Hampshire is at least skimming the front page, so I was following your budget process as well as other districts. And one of the things that I think that we perhaps have underplayed in Massachusetts is that we, I think, have spent a lot of time talking about state funding when it comes to the cities. So, as some of you know, I spent ten years on the Worcester School Committee. If you are on one of the city committees, you probably have some grounding in the foundation budget and Chapter Seventy and how it works, because you really don't have any choice. It's where most of your money comes from. But I think that we've underplayed making sure that other districts in the state actually have a good understanding of that. And I think that's left us in kind of an awkward position in terms of where we're at now. So, that's part of why I'm glad to be here, because I think that it's really necessary for districts like yours to have a good grounding on this. So this is specifically geared to your district, has your numbers, in addition to the most-up-to-date Chapter Seventy numbers that were passed as part of the state budget for the FY twenty-five school year, which started July first. But, it's important to have some understanding of why it is that we do what we do here. And so, we are starting, not quite at the beginning, I do do an addition of this that starts in sixteen forty, but we're gonna, we're gonna start with the seventeen nineties, with the state constitution. And so, for those of you who may or may not be aware, we not only have the oldest written constitution that's still in operation in the world, in Massachusetts, but we also have the first state constitution that specifically speaks of public education. Now, this is, I don't tell you this just to go woo-hoo, Hooray, Massachusetts, though that's pretty cool, but because it actually, it turns out, has some functional language in it that ends up being the reason why we even have a school finance formula in Massachusetts. Because it turns out that when you write things in the constitution, people sometimes test out whether or not you really meant them. And while it took us a little while, it turns out that the passage here, which is the full section that deals with the public education, you'll see in the middle talks about why it is we have public education, for the preservation of their rights and liberties. So, in other words, to make sure that our children are gonna be able to continue to have a democracy. But assigns responsibility. It says it shall be the duty of legislatures and magistrates. That means it's the state's obligation to make sure that we have public education in Massachusetts. Now, you wouldn't necessarily know that, if you're sitting where you are. And in fact, this is actually, you are the first ones to see this slide. I added this quote to the presentation this summer, because I read the dividing the public school finance and the creation of structural integrity this summer as part of my own professional development. But Massachusetts, according to Fletcher Swift in his studies in public school finance, was the state that pursued so long and so completely the policy of placing almost the entire burden of school support on local communities. We are, the Northeast in particular, but Massachusetts even more so, are particular in terms of how much of the responsibility of funding public schools has long rested on local communities. Now, this came to a bit of a head when, in the late eighties, early nineties, a number of schoolchildren, technically, but school districts across the state sued the Commonwealth of Massachusetts on the constitutional language. Essentially, the cases were, the constitution says it's up to you, Commonwealth of Massachusetts, to provide public education. We, for a number of reasons, among them Proposition Two and a Half, and also both the federal and state special education laws, do not have the local funding capacity to actually serve the children of our district the way that we should. Those districts, those cases came together before the Supreme Judicial Court in a case known as McDuffie. McDuffie was a child of a school committee member in Brockton. And the Supreme Judicial Court found for the plaintiffs, found for the children. And this is some of the language here, specifically referencing the constitution. What emerges from the review is that the words are not merely aspirational or hortatory, but obligatory. In other words, yeah, it sounded good when John Adams wrote that language, but it also obligates the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to do something. And to provide an education for all its children, rich and poor, in every city and town in the Commonwealth. So, that is why we have what we have. And that's what gives us Massachusetts General Law Chapter Seventy. So, for those of you, whoever potentially have wondered where the lingo comes from, why do we talk about Chapter Seventy-eight? It's because Massachusetts General Law Chapter Seventy, Section One, actually speaks specifically to this obligation that the Commonwealth has. And I want you, as we roll forward here, to think of this specifically in two parts. It's actually important to think of the calculation of Chapter Seventy first, as, and I've highlighted this a bit in the section of the law here, defining a foundation budget. In other words, how much does it cost to, at a foundation level, educate a child in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, given particular parameters and needs? And then, only once we have figured that out, do we then turn to the question of how do you then fund that foundation budget? So it is important to keep those two parts separated. The first, obviously, directly bears on the second, but when we get to the foundation budget, don't think it's all done. I think that sometimes we can, it's a good thing to know about, but you need to actually know about the municipal contribution part, too. Now, of course, we're at an important and interesting time here in terms of this, because we had the Student Opportunity Act passed in two thousand nineteen. Some of you may have been part of that effort. It was signed by Governor Baker that year. And that was something that had been long been fought for by MAS S, MAS C, both of the teachers' unions in the state, and lots and lots of parents and children and all kinds of other folks. When it comes specifically to the foundation budget, there's a number of things to know. First of all, it's a six-year implementation. FY twenty-five is year four. So, we're not done yet. We're only two-thirds of the way there. I think that's an important thing to keep in mind. Secondly, there's a number of things that are included. Now, note here that I'm focusing only on the foundation budget. It is important to know that there are other parts that even have to do with funding that are within the law. So, full funding of charter school reimbursement in the law. Twenty-five percent of transportation out of district for special education comes back in the circuit breaker now. There's a number of other pieces in there that have to do with studying and keeping up and so forth. As it pertains to the foundation budget specifically, there is a separate inflation rate for health insurance now. Obviously, health insurance frequently is one of the big drivers within school budgets. There's an increase in the in-district special education percentage. We'll hit a little bit on what that means when we talk about that section. An increase in the dollar amount per pupil for English learners. And the last one is really the big money and why you get the headline on the left that you do. An increase in the dollar amount per pupil for low-income students. And one legislator I know spoke of it as that last part is something like, this is an exaggeration, but two-thirds of the funding in the budget. It's not quite that much, but it's something of that nature. Now, another thing that I've heard a lot of people talking about out in towns and school districts and so forth is the Fair Share Amendment. So we, of course, amended the state constitution, first through a ballot initiative that then went through the legislature, that put a four-percent tax on any portion of a person's annual income above one million dollars. And that was specifically designated to go to education and to go to transportation. Now, that does still, just like any other budgetary allocation, take legislative action. Funding can only come through the legislature. It is, it's literally why they're there. But I've heard some sort of questions, kind of murmuring out there, as to where is this funding going, and are we getting any, and what about that kind of thing? So I did just add to this presentation recently, where this year, in FY twenty-five, the funding is going. We'll talk about minimum per pupil aid, because it's very much your story here. The seventy-four-dollar-per-pupil additional minimum aid, so SOA puts it at thirty dollars, it's a hundred and four this year. That seventy-four additional, that's coming from fair share funding. So, you know, is your district getting it? Absolutely. The free lunch reimbursement for schools, which the legislature did put in the budget again this year, that reimbursement, which funds all students who aren't already covered by the federal USDA funding, that is actually being funded through fair share funding. Now, I'll just give you a warning, it's only funded at a hundred and seventy million dollars, which we're calculating is underfunding, so watch for another round of that, we hope. There is lots and lots of higher education money in here, specifically around community college, but the big headline was free community college. That is fair share funding. There's additional funding for regional transit authorities, which is designed to try to make, both to support them and also to, in some cases, support ones that are doing free transit. And there's lots of funding for early childcare. I didn't go into as much detail on those two, but that's good to know. So in case you get any questions, that is where that's going. The other thing we should keep in mind as education advocates is that the millionaire's tax is generating funding well above the projections that the state had. Now, do know, by the way, that the funding is always certified in December, so that the sort of headlines we saw of there's more money here than we expected, don't expect anybody to spend it until we get to December, but do keep an eye on it. It matters. All right. So to go back to the foundation budget, when we're putting together first, remember the foundation budget. The way that the legislature tackled this was to really make a list of what it takes to educate a child, okay? And I know that if I were to ask you to sit down with a pen and piece of paper and come up with a list, you'd come up with most of these things. Worth noting, does not include capital spending, does not include transportation, but certainly includes your teachers, administrators, it does include operations and maintenance, guidance and psychological services, health insurance, and so forth. Now, each of those, if you take each of those, there's a dollar amount per pupil that's attached to it, by grade level. And those then come together in what's known as these base foundation rates. These are done by the grade level of the student, these are the FY twenty-five rates. This does represent the fourth year of the Student Opportunity Act phase-in. Note that this, the part of what was in the SOA that is incorporated here is there is an increase in guidance and psychological services. And so that was phased in actually pretty early on. That one didn't actually have a four-year phase-in. Now, to that base foundation amount on a per-pupil basis, there's an additional increment for English learners by grade level, and there's an additional increment for low-income students by percentage of low-income students in the district. So we'll take each of those in turn. In the fourth year of the SOA phase-in, and this one is moving towards a goal rate that's in the Student Opportunity Act, you see the numbers before you. Again, if a student is in each of these grade levels and is an English learner, that additional amount is added to the base foundation rate. And then, in terms of low income, and you can perhaps see here what I'm talking about in terms of this being the big money, shall we say? The low-income groups are there on the bottom, there are twelve. Your school district is group six. The notion here, by the way, is at the end of the Student Opportunity Act phase-in, for districts that are low-income group twelve, so eighty percent or more low income, they'll be receiving essentially equivalent to the base foundation rate for a middle school student. In other words, they'll get another hundred percent within the foundation budget for each of their low-income students. Okay? So, very progressive formula, intended to be so. In terms of special education, you will note that these are the highest dollar amounts that you've seen so far. Please don't get too excited. This is done by percentage. So there is an assumed percentage of special education students that is calculated. So for in-district special education, that is moving towards what will be a four-percent assumed rate, five percent for regional vocational districts, one percent is what it is for out-of-district. For this current year, the in-district is three-point-nine-three percent. So then, in terms of putting the foundation budget together, then, what we're doing here is then laying in that base foundation amount on that per-pupil basis, adding the English learner increment, the low-income increment, again, for all your low-income students, the special education percentage, and that is designed, according to Massachusetts General Law Chapter Seventy, to give you a fair and adequate minimum per-pupil funding. Now, I did wanna mention the inflation rate, which was a rather hot topic this year. I used to say that this is not the inflation rate you see in headlines, and then we actually got headlines about the foundation budget inflation rate this spring, so I can't say that anymore. But the inflation rate that's used for the foundation budget is based on spending that is done by state and local governments from the previous fall to the fall before that. It's the rate of change, okay? That is obviously a slightly complicated thing to explain. But I'm giving here, you hear the history to give you a bit of a picture as to sort of how it has bounced around. Now, keep in mind, this used to be, along with your enrollment, the only way that your foundation budget would change from year to year. And so, all of the increases that you know happen in your budget from one year to the next, your electricity rates go up, you have collective bargaining agreements, your transportation rate goes up, that all is supposed to be covered by the inflation rate in the foundation budget, because that's the only thing that's covering those rates of change, okay? Now, you'll notice that we had two fairly stable years there, in FY twenty-three and twenty-four. That's a natural stability. As part of the Student Opportunity Act, the rate is capped at four-point-five percent. And yes, it would have been higher for those two years. That was why it was getting headlines this past year, because part of what we were doing as an association alongside MAS S, alongside AFT and MTA, was asking, since the inflation rate for the foundation budget this year was one-point-three-five percent, was to carry over some of that extra inflation rate from the previous years and actually put it into the foundation budget. Now, remember, if it goes into the foundation budget, that actually then impacts every school district in some fashion or another. That isn't what happened, unfortunately. I will also note that health insurance, since FY twenty-two, is its own inflation rate. Remember, that was something that was in the Student Opportunity Act. It is five-point-oh-three for FY twenty-five, which is closer, probably, to what most of us saw in terms of our inflation rate increase this year. So, that then gives you this. Now, you'll notice I didn't start with your spreadsheet, because some people get hives when I show you spreadsheets, but this is your actual FY twenty-five spreadsheet. The DESI comes out with a new spreadsheet package, once the budget is signed by the governor. They come out with an initial one in January every year. And you'll notice, here's the sort of friendlier version. The foundation budget, then, for the district for FY twenty-five, again, we have not actually spent a cent yet. We haven't figured out how any of this is coming anywhere, is seventeen-point-nine million dollars. You'll see there, you've got the categories, the enrollment, the per-pupil, and then the total by category. Now, this is, obviously, a very enrollment-driven formula, right? It's based on how many students you have, in what grade, it's based on their needs. So, for those of you who have been in the district for any amount of time, when I say that this is what your enrollment is, I'm not telling you anything that you don't already know. But do realize that this number directly then impacts the previous one, and in particular, it impacts the change from one year to the next, because you're funded based on the students that you actually have each October in your building. So, you've got, in particular, of course, the downslope since the early two thousands is something that very much is impacting your foundation budget change over time. Now, the other thing is the selected populations, as the department calls them, which is the percentage of students that you have that are English learners, the percentage of students that you have that are recognized as low-income, and the percentage of students that you have with disabilities. A note, by the way, on disabilities, of course, is that DESI, you may have them, but DESI isn't funding them, okay? Or the state isn't funding them. Keep that in mind. The flat percentage is the flat percentage. But I did go through and pulled from the department's data, just to give you the trajectory on this. Of course, the main thing to note here in terms of English learners is the sort of climb that you've had, particularly since two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen. This is low-income. Now, there was a question that I got about the change in state determination. Change in state determination was when we went from essentially everybody turning in the forms to the state doing direct certification. Nearly every district in the state saw a slide in their recognized, low-income recognized, it wasn't that we had fewer poor kids. However, it is important to note that you've actually climbed back above where you were when that happened. So, there was a question that was asked that actually gave some different numbers here. These are the actual district numbers that the district has reported to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, closing out with twenty-nine percent for FY twenty-four. And then, of course, again, recognizing that it doesn't actually change your funding, though it changes your spending, students with IEP, special education students here, finishing at about twenty-six-point-three percent. Now, what those, with the exception of the special education recognition, then do, is it changes your foundation budget, okay? And I've given you here what the foundation budget has been since FY oh-nine. The ones that are highlighted in red are when your foundation budget was less than it was the year before. And if there's one thing that is crucial to understanding how your state funding works in this school district, it's that notion that because the population, the enrollment and so forth, changes from one year to the next, and in some cases, you have a lower enrollment or you have less recognized need, your foundation budget has gone down in some cases, okay? That will be important. Remember that for later. And in particular, I mean, that has happened recently, but there's obviously a number of places, when you are going back into eleven, twelve, fourteen, fifteen, that, or sorry, fifteen, seventeen, that that ends up happening. So that's like a, remember that for later. So, actually, this slide, this next slide has the wrong reference, so ignore that. Forget that. There we go. So, now we have to figure out how we're gonna come up with the funding, all right? We're gonna go back up to the state level to start this calculation, because it's the Commonwealth of Massachusetts that makes a couple of decisions before they even get into looking at individual districts. The first thing that they decide is that the entire foundation budget, so your foundation budget, plus Northampton's, plus Hadley's, plus Belcher Towns, plus everybody's, together, the state says is going to be funded fifty-nine percent through local funding and forty-one percent through state funding, okay? So, underlying everything from here on out is going to be that assumption, before anything else happens. The next two things that the state moves to are looking at the equalized valuation, which is the full and fair cash value of all taxable property in every municipality, taxable property, I know that matters here. And then also looking at the tax, the income taxes by community that are filed with the Department of Revenue. Now, the state takes the entire Commonwealth of Massachusetts with each of those numbers, the taxable property and the income taxes, comes up with these very large totals, and sets those two numbers equal to each other. Now, the thing that matters here is that in setting those two numbers equal to each other, and if you work with decimals, maybe this is a familiar concept for some of us, we may have to reach back into when we were learning about them. If you wanna have one number, that's, two numbers set equal to each other, the way that you do that is you multiply one by a number greater than one and one by a number less than one, okay? The two numbers that you see in front of you are then gonna be pulled from that statewide calculation, and they're gonna be applied to every single community in this state. Now, remember that what the state was setting out to do, if you go back to that first section on Chapter Seventy, Section One, was coming up with a standard local funding effort. So, the way that they can calculate how much Boston can afford to put towards its schools at the same rate that they can figure it out for Leverett, is by having the same standard calculation that applies to everyone, okay? That's what's going on there. Now, much like anything else I'm saying tonight, I'm not defending or arguing in behalf of this, that is what they've decided to do. So the way, then, that they put the pieces together for each community is they take the community's equalized property valuation and the community's income, they do that by zip code, they multiply it by those uniform property percentage and uniform income percentage we got from the previous slide. And that's gonna give us a local funding effort from income and from property. And adding those two together then gives us what's known as the combined effort yield. So, in your case, because you're a regional school district, these calculations are done for each of your towns separately, okay? these calculations are done for each of your towns separately, okay? And in both cases, both the property and the income. When those are added together, you get the combined effort yield again for each town. That is, again, the standard local funding effort applicable to every city and town in the Commonwealth. So, one of the, I think that this frequently is the piece that people miss, both when they're having a conversation about how much their school district gets in state aid compared to their neighbors, and also when regional school districts have conversations about how much each community needs to contribute to the district. Because remember that the state sets a standard in terms of contribution, that you have to at least meet within your regional school district agreement. You may be calculating that in other fashions. And that is based on this measure of wealth. And a lot of times, we don't talk about community measures of wealth when we're talking about funding local school districts. I've had a lot of conversations with FinComs this spring. So, the state then, to get to your local required contribution, it doesn't stop there. What the state had decided way back when we put the foundation budget into place in 1993 as part of the education reform law, was that the legislature compromised. One side wanted, I think it was 80%, the other wanted 85%. They compromised at 82.5%. So, no town is required, required is important word here, to fund more than 82.5% of their foundation budget, okay? They can, and most do, but you're not required to. So, they're going to compare that combined effort yield to 82.5%, and they're going to pull whatever is least. Then, here's the part where how much, what happened last year becomes what happens this year. They start, this town pulls how much, the state pulls how much the town was required to contribute the previous year, and it multiplies that by how much the town's revenue grew this past year. That's the municipal revenue growth factor, which I think is, again, one of the underappreciated factors of local contribution. I've had a lot of conversations about that this year, too. Because I, there, we very often, I'll talk more about this in a second, but we very often get fixated on 2.5% because we all know Proposition 2 and 1/2 caps the increase at that without additional action. But that isn't actually what the state is using. It's part of the calculation. Once we've done that, we look back at the town's target and we figure out how close it is to that. So, to talk about the municipal revenue growth factor for a second, the local contribution gets raised by, yes, that 2.5%, but it also includes new growth in the district, in the community. It also includes the state aid that the municipality gets, because of course, the state has that, and also looks at the prior-year local receipts. Now, I didn't actually pull screenshots of the municipal revenue growth factors. It is something the DOR puts out every year. But you can actually go in and actually pull your towns and actually walk through the calculation of how that comes together. So, if that is a conversation in your town, that is something you may want to consider doing. So, this is what the municipal revenue growth factors have been for the towns in this district for the past five years. Now, first of all, let me just note that I actually went back and double-checked AMERST because I haven't actually seen one that was below 2.5% before. So, FY '22, I'm sure we all know exactly what was going on FY '22 there, but that is unusual. But you can actually get a sense here then that when we talk about required local contribution, and again, this is the state's required local contribution, when it's calculating that for your towns, remember that it's not only looking at the number of students that are coming to the district from the town, but it's also looking at essentially ability to pay. And this is part of where that is coming from, okay? I personally have been advocating to regional school districts to make sure that people are familiar both with this and then with what the ensuing part is, which is really the balance of how much each town is required to contribute of its own foundation budget. Because I think that that may perhaps give people maybe a deeper appreciation for the differences among the towns in the district. So, this probably looks familiar. This is the FY '25 required minimum local contribution. This, again, is the state calculating it. Remember, regional school districts, regional school agreements may make other kinds of calculations. What the state says, though, is that you have to at least meet these, right? And I'm giving you this next part because I, again, in terms of that balance of how much is the state saying has to be contributed locally versus at the state level, it matters in terms of how your communities balance out. So, we run, this is, this is, yes, the DESI spreadsheet. The calculation here is exactly what we just walked you through. It actually just is using AMERST's numbers. AMERST is a target local share of 82.5%. And actually, when we get to the preliminary contribution, it gets to 82.5%. So, pie charts here, we talk about target local share versus the state foundation aid, right? So, if we take AMERST as part of the school district, AMERST then actually has a foundation budget, which is just for the regional school district, and then it has the elementary as well. When the state looks at the town of AMERST and the town of AMERST's foundation budget, because towns have them for the places that they're contributing to, their calculation is that AMERST should be contributing 82.5% of that foundation budget and getting in state aid that capped 17.5%. Now, this is going to get a little familiar, because it's actually true of a couple, two of your other districts, two of your other towns as well. The same story is true of Leverett. Now, I do want to note here, just make sure that part of what you're considering, if you decide to have these conversations locally, is those conversations first around equalized property evaluation and income, the combined effort, and then, you know, that being put together into the combined effort yield. And then also those municipal revenue growth factors, right? So, Leverett for FY '24 was a 5.35% municipal revenue growth factor, which then, you know, is increasing last year's required local contribution, and then we're shaking out something at the end. I have had some questions this year in terms of districts saying, you know, how concerned should we be that the preliminary calculation is below target share? Honestly, all that is, is a function of the fact that foundation budgets are going up because of the Student Opportunity Act. So, it's increasing, the foundation budgets are increasing faster than the municipal revenue growth factor can keep up with them, so to speak. So, people are falling below target share. There's no, there's no moral judgment to falling below target share. There's districts that are never going to meet target share. So, please don't let that concern you if that happens to be where things fall. So, for Leverett, we have that same 82.5%, but the, when we get into the actual required local contribution, it's 77.03% with the other 22.97% coming in as state foundation aid. For Pelham, whoops, we went a little faster than we wanted to. Same 82.5% in terms of targets, but then in terms of local contribution, it's a 72.72% with the other 27.28% coming in from state foundation. Remember, foundation aid is always going to get you to your foundation budget. The local contribution comes in first, then the state fills the rest of the gap. And Chootsbury. So, Chootsbury is the one that's different. Chootsbury target local share is 67.72% with their target aid being 32.28. Not surprisingly, Chootsbury comes in below target. The preliminary local contribution is 61.23% of foundation. And so, as you'll see in the next part, their local aid is closer to 40%, okay? Now, a thing to remember about regional school districts, again, and this is another one where I say, make sure that you're not only thinking in terms of enrollment, but also thinking in the state's calculation about ability to contribute, is that any community that has less local ability to contribute naturally is responsible for a greater share of the state funding that's coming in, okay? So, in other words, Chootsbury all by itself is a 62, 39% funding sort of calculation. And that then becomes part of the calculation, that becomes your calculation for the school district. So, the state's always going to, as I said, start with required local contributions. So, it's putting your required local contributions together before it does anything else, okay? There is, as I showed you, that separate spreadsheet that says, okay, here's, you know, here's AMERST, here's Leverett, here's Chootsbury, here's Pelham. And, but then the state says, okay, we're going to add those together, and that's the regional school district's required local contribution. And then it's going to say, what's the difference between that and your foundation budget? So, that is what we're doing here. So, remember, we have to get you to 17.9%, 17.9 million. Excuse me, let's keep our dollars and our percentages separately. That's the foundation budget, right? So, getting you to 17.9 million. Here's the AMERST local, required local contribution. Again, state calculations in terms of required minimums, okay? Then we've got Leverett, we've got Pelham, we've got Chootsbury. Then the state says, okay, it takes another $3.6 million to get you to foundation, okay? Now, that's the foundation budget. That was what we calculated in the beginning. How many students do you have, English learners, low income, all of that? If all we did was have the constitutional mandate, right? The thing that we settled with the 1993 McDuffie Act, that would be where you would be, and that would be where every district would be. That is the calculation, like this is where Holyoke is, this is where my hometown of Worcester is. This is, that getting you to foundation is what happens. However, if you're a district like yours and you have foundation budgets that have fallen in particular years, naturally, if you run this calculation, you may often see that that foundation aid for one year would be less than the foundation aid of the year before. And that isn't very popular. Even setting aside the, how do you then actually put a budget together? It's just simply not very popular. So, the legislature, up until the Student Opportunity Act, would have this annual debate over what they were going to do. Were they, how were they going to handle this? And they always came up with the same solution, but how much it was, was very much a varied question from one year to the next. But they've actually established essentially two principles. The first one is that no district will get less state aid than they've gotten the year before, okay? So, keeping in mind the number of years where your district had what was clearly a foundation budget that had gone down. Now, I could have run the calculations of how much difference there was, and we'll get there in a second. Think about that, what that means year over year, right? You're never going to get less, you're never going to get less. And then, the state also, within the Student Opportunity Act said, you'll also always get an increase of at least $30 per pupil. Now, if you're a district where your foundation budget is going up year over year, you probably are already getting an increase of at least $30 per pupil. So, we can kind of wash out all the districts where that's, where that's the case, right? State does figure that out, but that is, that already happens. For districts where that isn't the case, the $30 per pupil is in the Student Opportunity Act. And then, we have a legislative process in which people advocate for different kinds of things. And unfortunately, I think we found this year that maybe inflation was too complicated or too, I don't know, too controversial. But per pupil increments, people understand. And so, some years, as we mentioned, you end up with it being more than $30 per pupil, okay? So, what does this mean for your school district? Over the number of years, and I've got a calculation that shows you what this has looked like, it has, your, what is called hold harmless, has built up and built up and built up such that AMERST, Pelham Regional School District is getting $6.1 million in hold harmless funding, almost double what you're getting in your foundation budget funding for this year. And then, you had a $30 per pupil, but the legislature made it 104. They compromised on that with $74 coming from the fair share funding. So, there's an additional $129,064 on top of that, okay? So, that's the FY '25. And again, this is just required spending. Now, the thing, the reason I say required spending is the state is going to say to you, now, we gave you this additional aid, you have to actually spend it. I know, it's going to be really hard. But that means that your calculation ends up being, and I'm just going to show you this here, right? This is the foundation budget, that's 17.9 million. Required district contribution, the foundation aid is 30, is 3.6 million is your foundation aid. But then you actually see that minimum per pupil, per pupil increase of 104 on the left-hand side here. The right-hand side is both doing a comparison with FY '24, partly your enrollment, looking at your required contribution. But then, notice the change in language. It talks about foundation aid on the left side. It talks about Chapter 78 on the right side. And that's because that actually adds your hold harmless. Now, as a result of that, this percentage here at the bottom is more than 100%, okay? So, when we talk about required net school spending, we're talking about how much of your foundation budget do you have to spend? You have to spend 134.85% of your foundation budget. That's because you've got 34.85% of state aid coming in on top of your foundation budget, okay? The chart at the bottom is actually showing you that, but I'm going to give you a prettier version here on the next slide. That goes back farther, actually, too. So, I pulled the spreadsheets, I pulled the numbers back to 2006 just to give you some perspective on this. And this, it gets a little busy, so be patient on that. But I did want you to actually see some of the highlights in terms of the numbers. This is your required local contribution. And you can see how that it bobs around a little bit, because this, of course, is tracking against your foundation budget, right? So, it's going to sometimes go down a little bit, it's going to sometimes go up. It's also, of course, tracking against things like municipal contribution. Oh, sorry, municipal, municipal growth factor. Here's your Chapter 78. So, Chapter 78 is all in. It's your foundation aid plus it's the hold harmless. But here's the foundation budget, okay? The thing that matters in this chart from the perspective of what's the relationship of your school district to its state aid is everything that's above the yellow line, because that's all of the hold harmless and minimum per pupil increases. Everything below that is actually your foundation budget, which is actually reflecting your student enrollment and also, you know, district ability to contribute and that kind of thing. So, I'm not going to read all of these, but the, what I've done here is I've actually calculated essentially the above foundation. So, that's hold harmless plus the minimum per pupil increases for each of the years. And I did try to do it in a way where you'll actually be able to read them. You might have to just follow the bar charts down. Do note, here's one place where there's actually a fairly significant jump. That's partly, you can kind of see it. It's partly because of the reflection of the foundation budget there. Now, we're up into almost, you know, we're up to $4.7 million over foundation. We get up over 5 in FY '12. And again, these are numbers that have no reflection of your enrollment. There's simply that recognition that otherwise your state aid would go down from all of these previous years. Something starts to happen here, and it's because of the Student Opportunity Act. So, sometimes with districts like yours, and you are one of my extreme examples, I've done this presentation for you, and I've done it for Franklin, and if I ever get to Boston, that will be another one that does the same thing. Notice that your foundation budget actually starts to go up here in '22, and that's because of the Student Opportunity Act. Now, the problem from my perspective, and I realize that this is about the functionality of the law rather than anything else, is that we had minimum per pupil increases that were bigger these past two years, right? It was $60 per pupil and then 104. Now, not in your case, but in many cases, there were districts that were actually very close to getting out of hold harmless. That got sort of pushed back down into hold harmless because their foundation budgets were rising, 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 rising. But then that jump above the foundation budget went up. Again, not a local question here, but is something that was very much the case. So, if there's a slide to leave you with, I think it's probably this one in terms of things to know and remember. That, as I said, that everything above the foundation budget line is really the part to remember. Now, to just kind of give you a perspective then of what this then ends up looking like once you've actually then gone through the whole budget process, because of course, your school district, like most school districts in Massachusetts, does not fund at foundation, nor does it fund only at net school spending. There's only, say, five or six districts in the Commonwealth that do. Your foundation budget for FY '24 for this past year was $18 million. So, we've got that, you know, local contributions coming in, AMERST, Leverett, Pelham, Chootsbury, state fills in the gap. Here's, by the way, if you remember, the foundation aid for this year was just over $3 million. Last year, it was 4.2. So, you can actually see immediately sort of that hold harmless, even if all you're doing is comparing last year to this year. State last year for hold harmless was $5.4 million. You did get a $60 per pupil increase. And then, this was your local contribution above net school spending. Now, I don't Now, I don't have it parsed out by towns, the state only reports it in the composite. But I did want to make sure that I acknowledge somewhere that there is this sort of cycle back around where the local communities do something. Now, I have a chart that I'm a little nervous about, but it does answer one of the questions that you all asked. So this was the last chart that I did, and I apologize to those of you who are waiting for my, to get back to you. I did this chart at about four thirty this afternoon. I got asked, how do we compare ourselves with districts in the area? And the answer that I usually give is that you wanna be looking at district spending and district spending over foundation. So the state, you, pretty easily, you can find on the department's website a per pupil spending average by district. And while I know it's written into state law that they have to report that. I'm not fond of it for the reason that really, if you go back to the foundation budget expresses, right? If you look at what Holyoke, just looking at foundation budgets, how much should Holyoke be spending per pupil with a high percentage of English learners and a really significant number of low-income students? They should be spending more per pupil than a district that has a lower number of English learners and a lower percentage of low-income students, right? That's what the foundation budget says. So, I generally recommend against comparing per pupil. If you wanna talk about sort of district, maybe effort, if you wanna talk about towns working to meet need, usually you wanna compare over foundation. Now, the complication, of course, is that your district is funded at foundation at thirty-four percent over foundation before the towns kick in another nickel. So that makes things a little more complicated, because really what we need to do then is kind of layer in the, okay, how much of this is coming from the state before we did anything else, and how much of this is coming from the towns? So, let me just say this. If any of you behind me are from the press and you decide you wanna do something with this, please talk to me, because I think it's a chart that could be badly misunderstood. Okay? With all of that sort of things. The per pu- the purple on here is the percentage of state aid over your foundation budget, okay? So we, we know where we are with you all on that one, okay? The green is then that next step, what happens, right? So you saw that on the previous slide for you for FY twenty-four, which was the, you were, you had the five million dollars you were getting over foundation, and then another seven coming in from the local towns, okay? So that's what's gonna be going on with yours here. So, there's no shame in not having any green. In fact, it just means that you're not a hold harmless district, okay? So like, there's, there's no, no harm, no foul. This does, of course, present an interesting picture a little bit in terms of, you can probably then guess that Granby, and I've done this presentation in Granby, has a declining student enrollment, because they're a hold harmless district, right? So they had to do that, sort of kick in the, the aid every year, too. Probably less of a case with some of the other districts. And the other thing, of course, that's a, that's a little bit of a complication here is that we also have the Student Opportunity Act, which means foundation budgets are going up. So Northampton, for example, was really working its way out of hold harmless, and would have probably been out this year. They're one of the districts I'm frustrated about, but here we are. So then, what does the actual then community or communities do then after? So this is the contribution over. Now, remember, that's being added on top of the percentage that the state already kicked in over in some cases, okay? So when I pull your report from the state, and it says, what is your percentage of spending over foundation? And it tells me seventy percent over foundation. We need to recognize that thirty percent of that is coming from the state before anything else happens with the towns. So if what we're talking about is, you know, funding forty percent over foundation, that's different from a district that's getting a significant amount of hold harmless versus a district that's not, okay? Really complicated concept, and again, possibly dangerous chart, but did wanna actually answer the question. Now, that's the foundation budget part. I did also try to answer your questions. I think they probably can stand on their own, and I wanna also be respectful of time, and I also don't wanna leave anyone confused. So, I'm gonna defer to you, Madam Chair, as to what you wanna do next. We can run through some, here's some quick answers to some of your questions if you want, or I can pause or however you wanna handle things.
I think if you can answer some of the questions that we sent ahead of time, that would be very helpful.
Okay. So I tried to divide these by topic. When I present to new school committee members, one of the things that, when we do charting the course, and we have a whole bunch of different districts in the commu- in the room at the same time, one of the things I usually like to do is say, okay, raise your hand if your school district passed their budget in December, in January, in February, in March. Because across Massachusetts, there are school districts that will pass their school budget for the next year as early as December and as late as June. So when I get asked, what is the right time to do? The answer is, it totally depends, okay? Subject to regional agreement, subject to town meeting deadlines. The cities just have to get their stuff through city council, which granted is a pain in the neck, but doesn't take a ton of time. So, it depends. And it also, I would say, depends partly on your dependence on state aid. So if you also think about the cities, most of their funding comes from the state. So it's gonna matter a lot to a district that's getting seventy-five percent of its budget and is only funded at foundation, whether or not the legislature does something else to the foundation budget on the way through. So, when we have a conversation about, there maybe is a disagreement between the school committee and the administration, or there's a lot of community conversation about proposals that are coming from the administration. Remember, a budget is proposed by an administration to the school committee. The school committee, we talk about passing a budget in cost centers. The terminology there is really, I mean, it's something you should agree with, with your administration as to exactly what that means for you. But it's the buckets that you pass it in. Generally, there's one for administration. There's usually one for operations and maintenance, or maybe you just utilities. Transportation usually stands by itself. You allocate those buckets, and then what would happens within those buckets is up to the school. So you never have an individual, I'm deciding that we're having, you know, four French teachers rather than three, or what have you. Keep in mind that balance. It should be an ongoing communication. I also think it's one, we're communicating clearly with the community as to no decision is made until the school committee makes it. However, at the same time, things like staffing decisions are made by administration, is a good balance. And again, how districts handle it varies a bit. I will say that having a conversation very early on in the budget cycle about what your district goals are, if you have a strategic plan, what particularly the administration is seeing as particular needs, and having at least some common conversation before there's a moving forward of discussion, and also the administration doing most of its work, is pretty important. So, you know, get the sort of the values and the priority conversation early, maybe even before you start talking numbers. In terms of best practices, I was asked if there is a, a budget model. So, I, again, a little bit of cautious, this is the one that makes me almost, almost as nervous as the other slide. ASBO's Meritorious Budget Award is kind of the gold standard nationally for putting together a budget. Do not please ask your finance office to do this in a year, or two, or maybe even three. It is a long process, there's actually a pathway to the MBA that ASBO lays out. But in terms of a clear budget document, that actually lays things out in ways that are understandable to the general community, that includes all the relevant information, like a five-year projection, a five-year lookback, includes all of the revenue sources. The Meritorious Budget Award is it. There are three districts in Massachusetts, I think, last year that got it. I think, I think Springfield got it again, I know Worcester did, and I'm pretty sure that Wellesley did. But, thing to look at, long-term, please. In terms of spending, so I, I frequently get some version of the, is there a way for us to cut the budget that doesn't mean cutting staff? And again, speaking as someone who has, has voted budgets that have laid people off, I get it. It would be, you know, it would be awful anyway, but it's an awful thing to, to feel to have to do. The problem is that most of your spending is absolutely the problem. The good thing and the bad thing, is that most of your spending is on staff. It always is, that's true of every school district. There isn't any way to do this without people. And your second highest cost center, and on the regional side, you're, you're carrying this, is your health insurance. So, that's how this works. We can nickel and dime the margins, we can talk about trying to save money on whatever, electricity, curriculum, what have you. But you're always gonna be nickeling and diming the margins. And anytime there is any kind of a budget crisis or a budget tension, unfortunately, the impact is gonna fall on staff. And that's why you saw the headlines that you did this, this, this spring, because that was happening across the state. I got a question about scaling with enrollment. Just about everything scales with enrollment. I, I did kind of go through cost centers, and I couldn't really come up with many, I mean, unless you're shutting off lights in classrooms that are unused, if things are falling, there's not really a lot that goes down. As one of you put in one of your questions, this, of course, is the problem with charter school reimburse, you know, charter school tuition, which is that, yeah, okay, the, the kid goes, but it's not like you can cut a third-grade teacher because you lost, you know, three kids from different grades. And honestly, even administration, once a district is a particular size, I mean, every school district has to have a superintendent. You've gotta have some people who are in charge of things like special education and finance. There's not a lot of, of margin in terms of those. In terms of cost increases, certainly, special education continues to be one. Just as an off, a note, the Foundation Budget Review Commission in two thousand and fifteen, which was what precipitated the Student Opportunity Act, said that even if the recommendations were fully implemented, which was amounting in their estimation to two, about two billion dollars, special education would still be under-recognized by about six hundred million dollars statewide. Now, remember, that was ten, almost ten years ago now. So, and transportation increases continue to be a big, a big margin. In terms of comparisons with districts, so I kind of danced or like, I wrote this one before I did the other chart. But I am always concerned about per pupil comparisons, let me say that first. It is really good, and I, I do actually like the department, the department will, if you go into the school and district profile page, you can actually pull what Desi thinks of as sort of like districts, and it does it based on demographics. So how, you know, how, what's your percentage of low-income students? How many of your students are English learners, that kind of thing? That can be a little, that can be a little bit more valuable than, I mean, we all kind of think about our neighborhood, but sometimes our neighborhood isn't really the people who, you know, the districts that look like us. I do think it's important to have a conversation about local revenue, because you can have districts that demographically look like you that don't actually have the same ability to contribute. That's sort of important. And then you can do those sorts of, this takes a little work, which, again, I'm sorry, that's why you got the chart, the last minute you did. But you can actually pull, what did districts actually spend, right? So we do the whole foundation budget, and then, okay, but then what happened? That is actually reported out by the department every year, although I, I did just send an email last week because it's not up to date. And then, revenue. So revenue is the, is the tricky one, right? I think there's a little, there was a little bit of confusion on somebody's part about things changing because of the low income, because of the, how we were counting low income. So I do just wanna note, Title I does continue to be funded. Title I also doesn't actually pull from the free and reduced lunch count, it actually pulls from census data. So there were some changes because of that, if you sort of caught parts of that, that, that was part of what was going on there. There are still two more years of the Student Opportunity Act implementation for the foundation budget. And then, the dis- the legislature is actually keeping its commitments in terms of the charter school reimbursement, the, the phase-in of the transportation for out-of-district special education and so forth. So ESER. The question was, was essentially something like, how do we deal with the fact that ESER is gone? Very important question. It really depends on what you used ESER for. So, one of the things that has frustrated me over the past number of years, one of the things, is there were a lot of headlines that sort of gave, it seemed to give the impression that, that school committees were somehow shocked that ESER was going away. We all knew that, right? That's, that's what was, that was how this worked, we, that's not a shock. So knowing what then was gonna happen at the end was sort of always part of the story. And so lots of districts did capital spending, right? They fixed HVAC, they did longstanding repairs, they bought technology. Some districts bought curriculum. And then the other half of this, of course, was that we were supposed to be dealing with the pandemic. And while there's lots of headlines around learning loss, we also know that a lot of that was also about mental health concerns around students, right? And student support. So, that balance is really the question, because if what you did was spend it on sort of stuff, well, then you spent it on the stuff, and it, you know, you've done, and, okay, fine. But if you spent it on staff, or you spent it on maybe contractual supports, then really the conversation that the district has to have is, do we still need that? And if we do, how do we fund it, right? So I've seen districts that have, have simply gone to their communities and said, hey, we actually still need these, you know, these counselors, these adjustment counselors, these guidance counselors, the whatever they are. Or we still need to have that per pupil staffing ratio in the early elementary grades because of what we've seen with the students who are coming in, or what have you. I will say that there certainly has been lots of pushback happening in terms of advocacy at the national level. I'm a member of ASBO, which is the, the School Business Association, and like, a lot of districts sort of saying, look, you gave us, you know, what, what admittedly was a lot of money all at once, but some of those needs haven't gone away. And so rather than shouting at us in terms of, why is the learning loss not somehow vanishing? Can we talk about what students actually need? Something to consider in terms of your conversations for various levels of advocacy. Capital funding. I wish I had a magic answer. And honestly, every time I see another research study, in fact, there, there was an article that, that, for those of you who get the Daily Ed, you'll see this tomorrow. There was a recent research about Philadelphia capital funding, and then going into sort of what national, nationally should happen. So Mass School Building Authority, we should first of all be grateful for. I know that we all probably have our quibbles with them, but we actually do have a state agency for school capital and school buildings, which not every state does. And having not only that sort of major renovation or rebuild, but also the accelerated repair projects, which we lost for a bit but are back now, that's one. There are very specific state grants, so there's been a couple of years now of the Green Build Fund. I'm not gonna get into too much about that, but it is what it sounds like it says. And then very specific federal grants, right? So there's been a lot of energy around electric school buses. And what the requirements are, in some cases seem to vary with each iteration of the grant. That's kind of it. There isn't sort of magic other Monday, money hiding anywhere, I wish there were. I also will say that, you know, as someone who followed that conversation and going back to the previous conversation, the capital needs of schools across the country were something that I think got at least a lot of energy as a result of the pandemic. I don't know that we necessarily have seen a response in terms of funding, and I think there was a lot of hope that maybe we would. I think once we start seeing the reporting settle out in terms of what districts did with ESER, that's probably gonna tell a story. Because districts, when they got a whole lot of money that was gonna go away, a lot of districts said, hey, this is when we finally get to fix things that we know we should have. So, something to consider. I think we already did enrollment, oh yeah, we already did that one. Okay. So, this is the part where I always wish that I had a magic answer, right? And rarely do I have a magic answer at the end of these presentations. Things that would be good to know. I think that every school district, every school committee should really have a good familiarity with their revenue sources and sort of what the proportionality is. And I think that most school committees do have a sense of how much of their funding is local versus how much is state. But I'm adding to that how much of it is foundation aid versus how much of it is hold harmless aid. I think having a shared understanding of chapter seventy, not only for yourself, but also for your town officials, is really important. And so I appreciate the fact that you invited the people that you did tonight, 'cause I think that's, that's always a huge thing for school districts to do. And then that considering the area picture, and whether or not you actually are a comparative district or not. And I think that, you know, we can sort of look at the outside and have assumptions, and maybe those aren't always accurate. In terms of areas both for advocacy and also for you to explore, obviously, the state reimbursement lines are one, right? I know I, I do not need to tell any regional school committee in Massachusetts about regional transportation reimbursement, you guys have got it. That matters, charter school reimbursement obviously matters. Just to put out there, I'm sure you all know this, but I do think it's important for folks in general to know, charter school reimbursement reimburses for increases in tuition. It never was designed to reimburse for the full cost of tuition, that is not what the state law says. This does not impact all of your district, but it does certainly impact some of the towns and the parts of your district, which is rural school aid. In terms of successful advocacy, we've seen from school districts over the past couple of years, having rural school aid go from something that tended to only kind of get added in the senate version of the budget to something that now gets put in by the governor, and then we have a conversation about how much it's gonna be, has been honestly a pretty big victory, I think, for the rural districts. I know that, you know, they had the rural schools report, they're hoping for sixty million dollars, believe that the budget is something like seventeen. But that has become a commitment that we actually are really seeing from the state, and I and I think one of the conversations we have to have, and I will swear to you that I say this as often in Boston and Worcester as I do it in other parts of the state, we have to stop forgetting that we have a whole bunch of the state that has declining enrollment and has kids spread out over a large area, like, that matters too, those are also our kids. And then this relationship of spending to revenue, and I don't say that to, to, there's no gotcha here, but that's why it matters when we have conversations like, here's what the transportation contract is going up by, here's what the health insurance is going up by. We have a lot of attention that gets paid to our collective bargaining agreements, and yes, again, people are the bulk of what we do, so not arguing with that part, but the, the sort of eyebrow-raising increases are usually coming in other parts of the budget. The, the dollar increases, yes, are larger because of the amount that goes to staff, but the percentages are frequently in other parts of the budget, and so that's an important thing. Also, I do think that it's important for schools to have a, a sort of a familiarity and encourage their towns to have a familiarity with their municipal revenue growth factors. I did get a question asking sort of, how early could we have that, right? When, when could we know? The state comes out with that in January, I'm sorry. I think if you, you know, I think that a town, if it knew the part, you know, if it went in and actually pulled the parts, probably could calculate it a little earlier. But I do think we have to kind of get away from the 2.5% as something that we're, you know, that that is the whole conversation. Again, in no way to dismiss the fact that we have towns who, and school districts want them to, have, you know, libraries and fire departments and parks and all of those kinds of things, we want those funded too, but I think that that's an important part. And I think, yes, that that is all the slides. Although, let me note this, that is my email address, that is my cellphone, it is usually not any farther away than that from me. I'm going to make this offer not only to you all, you all know that I'm your field director, because I go out all the way to the river, but also to any of the, if you are a town official who is behind me and want to actually have a better conversation or an understanding of this. As far as I am concerned, a significant part of the charge of my job, as someone who's who does school finance for MASC, is making sure that more people understand how this works, because I think that makes all of our working relationships stronger and better. So, that's an offer not only for you all, but for really any of the people who are involved. And that is what I have for you, Madam Chair.
Excellent. Thank you so very much for all of this work and coming out and talking to us.
You are welcome.
Really quickly.
Well, it's funny, because occasionally my boss will tease me about how fast I talk, and this is part of why. It is a lot of information, it is complicated, I appreciate you taking the time for it. I do think it's important for everybody to know though, so thus the presentation.
Excellent. Thank you so much. So, we do have a large meeting to get through, friends, but if you have like one clarifying question that can be fairly quickly answered, yep, Sarah.
Well, I, I don't know how quickly it can be answered. I would like to know if there's anything the school committees can do, or the town governments can do to change our foundation budget. I mean...
So, I love this question. And I also particularly love having this question asked, I believe, yes, I thought so, we've been joined by your Senator, and I, thus I have a slightly more hopeful answer than I might everywhere. Oh, oh, oh gosh, you're, yes, all right. Well, first of all, my compliments, because you're well-served here. So, the, as I said, this year is the first year where I've actually, well, the, first of all, it's the first year I've ever been invited to present FinComs, right? That was already a bit of a stunner. It is the first year where I have heard as many conversations about Proposition 2.5, about municipal revenue growth factor, about these kind of more, much more granular pieces of the calculation on local contribution than I have ever had before. And I mean, I, I've had this job for nine years, I was doing school funding from sort of a Worcester perspective advocacy for another, I don't know how many before that. And previously, we, we were having, and it was necessary, all of the conversations on sort of the foundation budget side, right? Low income was massively underfunded, English learners, we were had just, like, we were off-base in terms of how we were thinking about it. Health insurance, the percentages were ridiculous. Special education, honestly, we still have an issue there. So, we definitely are still having some of those conversations, right? Special education, we're going to still have to go back and have another conversation about. I think that we are under-calculating both guidance and psychological services, probably also instructional leadership, which is like the principals and assistant principals, I think we're seeing that we need, districts are expressing through their spending that they need more staffing there than is calculated. I'm, I'm sure I'm leaving some out, but there's some on that side. But the other side of the calculation is the part that was very explicitly left off the Foundation Budget Review Commission. Like, when they had their charge, their charge was, we aren't talking about the municipal contribution, that's not a conversation. And I went to all of those meetings, and whenever anyone tried to bring it up, the answer was, that's not what this is about, we're not doing that here. I think the, the, the answer is going to be that we have to have that conversation. That involves a lot of different things, right? So, you saw the, the slide that had the, you know, come out of Massachusetts, the 4159 assumption, right? That's a, that's a pretty straightforward one, okay? In terms of who's holding which part of the bag. And again, it varies, obviously, from districts like, you know, several of your, the towns have this in terms of the 82.5% to districts that are like Holyoke, which has one of the lowest contribution rates. But as a, as local communities, we are carrying, even before we get into funding over, we are carrying most of the foundation budget, the state is carrying the lesser half of it. And then you can get into other things, like, should 82.5% be the cap? Does it matter if you're at 80, you know, if you're at 85% versus a, you could fund 150% of your foundation budget? That's a conversation. Should we reverse Proposition 2.5? Is the municipal revenue growth factor including the right things? I think that those are conversations that I'm seeing a warming on the local side. There are a handful of people in the legislature who, I mean, I got pulled aside during the Ways and Means hearing up in Greenfield by Senator Lewis, who's the, the Chair of Education, to have exactly this conversation. Certainly, I know the, the folks behind me who represent you in the legislature are already there. So, I think that that's it, because I, I do think that what your story is, and, you know, if I, if I scared you tonight with your charts, I'm sorry, I think it's good for you to see them, but I think that part of what your story is, is look, the towns are contributing well over foundation, right? You are funded by the state well over foundation. Here is what you're able to do, but here's what you're not able to do, and here are the difficult conversations and decisions you're having to make, even with the chart that looks like it does. I think that that's the story that needs to be told, and really only school committees can tell it, right? You're the ones who sit at the table and say, we can, there's only so many things we can do, and because the costs increase from one year to the next, no matter what kind of magical things we try to do, you still got to run the buses, you still need teachers, you still have to turn on the lights. And so, I think that, that also, that conversation about the inflation rate has got to come back too, because inflation hits everybody, and, you know, is the, is the calculation we're using the right one, should it be something else? Long answer to a long question, but I think that there's hope, but I think that the answer is going to have to be, for that conversation, that conversation has to happen at the state level. I will add also that I think the cap, school capital conversation, I think it does need to happen at the state level, but I also think there's probably a federal component there too, because honestly, that's one where, if we could take one for the team, we probably could do some national good, because there are states that are hurting much worse than we are.
Thank you. I had, okay. Jennifer Tillman-Erve.
Tracy, just with regard to comparing ourselves to other districts, does it, does it cloud the waters at all that we're a 7 through 12 district?
So, if you pull, yeah, so if you pull the, so it, it doesn't really make a difference in terms of the, the, the part that I showed you in terms of the funding over foundation kind of calculation. And if you look at the, the state's comparisons, you can compare by that. So, if you want to do that kind of a comparison, you can actually do that kind of a comparison.
We can compare ourselves to other 7 through 12.
7 through 12 districts, yep.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for the explanation of the budget. I, I have a question about that dangerous chart. So, specifically the percent over foundation, it seems to be quite different for different districts in the area. How much of that spending is because the school district chooses to do that versus there's something underlying that requires the school district to pay more because they have larger percentage of special education or something? The, the reason I'm asking is that, one thing I would take immediately from that chart is to say, well, we're running a really expensive school district, and I'm trying to understand if there's something in there that's not visible that explains why it's so high in one school district versus another.
So, I mean, the, the part, the part that is visible is the, you are required to spend that school spending, which means that if the state funds you over, you have to spend that, and then you have that. But setting that aside, yes. I think that, so remember, it's not necessarily that you have an expensive school district because found, the foundation budget is based on your enrollment and the students that you have. So, if you started doing things like looking at a per pupil spending, and we tried, we pulled, and I haven't done this, but if we pulled, say, the numbers for Springfield to Holyoke, or Cambridge, we might find that they had higher, you know, higher per, because they have a higher number of English learners, they have a higher, right? And the special education piece, so this was a, this was kind of a question that I got, because special education is represented the way it is in the foundation budget, it's sort of, it almost isn't included, right? It's not, there's no measure of need. One of the, one of the conversations that I think that school committees can have around special education is, first, it's good to have a familiarity with which needs you're, you're dealing with, right? So, there's a, there's a number of different kinds of designations within special education, that's matters. Knowing the sort of proportionality of in-district versus out-of-district special education, how much you're paying in tuition, what needs you're working within the district. I do think that there's, there's something, I mean, certainly, the state always wants to have conversations about IEP meetings and recognitions and that kind of thing, but I also think, and some of you may even have run into this, districts can kind of develop a reputation of being particularly good at something, right? And families will move to a district that has a reputation that's particularly strong in something. So, I think you can end up with percentages being swung that way too. I don't know that that's part of the story for any of these, but that kind of thing also can be too, right? If you're a school, if you're a school district that has a history and gains a reputation for being welcoming for, for refugee students, you may end up with a higher percentage of English learners. You also, of course, have a couple of higher education institutions, which means you have a proportionality in terms of people who are international. Those things can matter too. So, I do, I agree with you that I think that there's probably some invisibility behind that, in terms of what is it that the district has felt that they need to deal with. I also will say this, I think that when it comes to funding over foundation, that is, that is your reality. So, you know, the, to sort of reverse it, I've occasionally gotten the question of, well, is there any district in Massachusetts that actually spends at foundation? And the answer is, yes, mine. I was on the Worcester School Committee for 10 years, we're funded about 99.5% of foundation again this year. I'm not recommending that, okay? But that is, that is the lived reality of that. The lived reality here is, is a district that starts at 130% of foundation. Okay, so that means particular things. What then do you do, you know, going beyond that? And how does that, how does that then create a shared community sense of what your school district looks like?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Erve, last question?
Thank you for this, because you clarified a lot of things, and I think the thing that is, stands out to me, is that this notion of, of, of a large, not a large, of some people looking at our budget and comparing it with other budgets is, and doing it on a per pupil, is not a really good thing. And there are a lot of people in this community who have done that, so I've really appreciated that. It's more nuanced than that.
It is.
And, and it's a lot more nuanced, nuanced than that, and I would like those in the audience who have done that, or who have heard this, to understand that, that trying to do it on a per pupil basis is not a good thing.
I'm glad that you found that useful.
Excellent. Again, thank you so much, I can't imagine that was a fast and easy presentation together, and we really very much appreciate you coming and talking to us tonight.
And as I said, you, you have, the, the presentation was shared, you have my contact information, if any of you go home tonight, wake up tomorrow morning and realize that you now have a question, shoot me an email, okay? We can talk, I want to make sure that you're well-grounded in this.
Excellent. Thank you again.
And good luck with the rest of your meeting.
Thank you. I am going to suggest we take a five-minute break, come back at 7:55, and, okay. Um, item is public comment. I did not receive any written or, uh, phone messages. Um, so if there's anyone in the public that would like to come make comment, we will have, like I said a few times before, we have a very long meeting to get through tonight. So I'm going to adhere us to our three-minute rule.
So you all have a copy of the written material?
Yep.
On the bottom is the cherry sheet for the regional school district. On the top is the comparison of what was budgeted for the region and what came in on the cherry sheet. Um, I'm, I did this because I started reading about East Hampton and North Hampton.
Can you state your name?
Vincent O'Connor, one seventy-five Summer Street in Amherst.
Thank you.
And I read about the discussions that were had in North Hampton and East Hampton. I was looking around for articles about the cherry sheet impact for Amherst and for the region. And I read nothing, saw nothing. And, um, so I, you know, afflicted by forty-three units of college math, I decided to prepare, prepare something for you. And you can read it, draw your own conclusions. I think they're pretty clear. My, my concern is, um, uh, that this kind of a document should have been prepared by somebody, both in the town hall and in the school administration office. It should have been in your hands a weekend after, uh, the figures were released. Um, and because that's the only way that you and the superintendent can have a meaningful discussion about what to do with any additional money that's come in. And I would just say on behalf of, of people who have lobbied our state senator and state rep, the best way to say thank you for their efforts on behalf of, of money for education is to spend some of that money, um, on, on kids. So, um, and I think the other missing part that I have no access to, and I don't know if the school committee does, is a list of the positions that were eliminated as a result of the underfunding of the regional school budget. And I think that that's also should be the subject of a, of a conversation between the superintendent and the regional school committee. And the only way to have that is for the superintendent to present that list to the school committee and the public so we can have a meaningful discussion about it. So, uh, I, I just asked, you know, the, our state senator, I understand, spent a lot of hours for two weeks making sure that we had a, a state budget by the end of July. And the best way to thank our representatives, our state senator, is to spend some of the money above and beyond what we anticipated on, on student, student-facing employees, especially, um, those that are, are serving the kind of needs that the previous speaker just talked about.
Thank you so much. I, I'm sorry, we have to cut it off tonight at three minutes. Thank you.
Yeah.
I appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Hello. My name is Georgia Malcolm, and I work at the high school. And you know I'm going to see me up here quarreling, fussing, complaining. But I actually come today to thank you for hiring Dr. Z and NiB and Tanya, uh, because I think they make a wonderful team. Um, and this is me on part, you know, on behalf of the E-Board. There's a couple of us here from the executive board for the, the Amherst Pelham Educators Association. Um, you know, Dr. Z, we have, we have been collaborating. Um, and there's been a lot of fiscal responsibility. Dr. Z is really looking into that, how the money's been spent, because she want to ensure that the students are benefiting from it. And she has collaborated and she has listened and she has responded to our acts. So, I mean, the union is really excited to work with her. We had an amazing convocation. Everybody got really pumped up. And I just want to say thank you to her and NiB. We really are happy that she's here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Georgia.
Hi, I'm Irene LaRoche. Um, I live in Sunderland. I'm a teacher at Amherst Middle School and I am also representing the APA Executive Board to, um, also, um, thank and appreciate, um, you for bringing us Dr. Z, for Dr. Z and NiB, um, for an amazing start, um, for centering us with their goals and, um, for staying true in all of our meetings so far to them as well. So, um, we've had two wonderful days with our students. And my own children are at home and had their first day of school. So I'm gonna leave and I'm not, not to offend, but I also want to thank the school committee for the hours and the time and the efforts, starting with the budget. Amazing. Thank you for these very complex discussions they're going to be having and supporting, um, our students. Um, we hope to see you again, um, and share the wonderful things that are happening with our kiddos. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Uh, Mika McGee. I am, um, now here at the high school, Dean, ten, twelve this year. And I, first of all, want to thank the school committee. Um, you know, in the past, we've had a contentious race, relationship, the APEA, um, with the school committee. That is not the way we want things. Uh, we want to be able to have a collaborative relationship with the school committee, uh, with the superintendent and central office. Um, and I think the, the first step has been, um, the work that you have done in finding a great superintendent. And then the superintendent's work at finding the right people to put in place, um, to do what we need to do here, which is to take care of children. So I just want to say that thank you very much, school committee. And thank you, Dr. Z, NiB, uh, Tanya. We're looking forward to working with you, um, on making this a great school district for our kids. So we really appreciate, because we know, we really appreciate you because we know this is a lot of hard work. We had a great convocation. Dr. Z, I know that was probably a couple of sleepless days for you and NiB and, and those that work with you. And it was awesome and we appreciate you so much. So thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. That is it for public comment? Yep. Um, okay, so chairs update. I don't really have one. We started the school year. I, so many good things coming. All right. School committee announcements, uh, subcommittee updates. Jennifer?
Uh, just to note that APSME contract marketing is continuing. Um, we are continuing to have meetings regularly with the APSME management team. Also, the fiscal sustainability subcommittee met in August. The subcommittee is myself, Deb Leonard and Bridget Hines. We had one, our first meeting, we, we talked about a lot of things. We talked about what our, what our next meeting was going to look like. So, um, we, I will, we will be sure to keep the, um, the full committee apprised of any, um, developments from that subcommittee. Thank you.
Excellent. Uh, Sarah?
So, um, I and Sarah Bass and Tillman are on the budget and audit subcommittee. And we reported back in, I guess we met in July, a month ago. Um, just to say, nothing has happened. Still trying to get a meeting with Dr. Z, who's very busy, about the budget process for this coming year.
So in actuality, I invited the budget audit subcommittee to an audit walkthrough and proposal. And, um, Sarah Bass attended. You were out of, you were out of town, so that will be a part of my update today.
Okay. I think, though, the, the subcommittee also has some other, there are some other issues we'd like to talk about.
Right. So I'm open. I, in that same email, I said that NiB was ready whenever we were ready to, to meet.
Oh, maybe I missed that one.
So we could go ahead and meet.
Thank you.
Tillman?
Um, I inquired with the town of Leverett if the CPA would entertain a out-of-cycle proposal for the, um, for funds for the track and field project. And unfortunately, the answer is no.
Bummer.
So, um, the school equity advisory committee met last month. NiB and, um, Dr. Z attended and we had a really robust conversation about discipline disparities. Tomorrow night, we meet again right here at five-thirty and the topic is, um, academic disparities. We're doing a review of each of our three core areas and then we're going to come back to this committee in the fall with a charge and, um, and a conversation on next steps.
Great. Anything else? Okay. Next up is approval of minutes. So I wrote these minutes because they are, oh, um, because Pelham and the region had a joint meeting together at the end of, beginning of June. Um, so it's just the joint portion. Um, so if there were any edits. Um, June eleventh. Sarah?
I'm look, I'm looking at the, this is the June eleventh document, yeah?
Yep.
Under goal three is just a typo. A regional agreement is in need of tidying, I think. Tight, tidy-ing. But I have a question about, you said this is just the joint portion?
Mm-hmm.
Will there be other minutes for the, I guess, after Pelham adjourned? Or we did that or we don't know?
I, I mean, I probably can take my notes I took and turn them into minutes. These were just, I am the secretary for Pelham School Committee, so Pelham will approve these minutes, but they are joint, so I put them on here. So the region could also approve that part. So it's just the joint portion of that meeting. Jennifer?
Um, so what is the status of our committee having, generating minutes for our meetings?
Uh, we talked about it at the retreat. Um, and are we looking into some AI technology that can help us with it?
I think there was a suggestion from Schutzbury. There was one person we were going to look into and then we're going to look into if we could afford a part-time person as well.
Yeah. I, I ask because I think it's important that we have, obviously, it's important that we have minutes because we're required to. But I think it's also important to have minutes relatively soon after the meeting so that we ourselves can go back and reference like how a motion was worded or how a discussion went or what was decided on something. There was a time that we had a person, um, taking minutes. Maybe you can remember her name, Sarah Bass. She was great, like Maylene or something like that. She was fantastic. And, and she, I don't even think was a school employee. She just, it was just a part-time job and her job was to take minutes. So that seemed to work really well. I don't know if that's something that we can, um, that we, that we can do or, um, I think that would be the best solution. Um, I kind of think, think it doesn't really make sense for this committee to approve these minutes, given that we, we have a whole, we, we had that whole meeting. But I, I don't know.
They're incomplete.
Yeah, they're incomplete for our committee.
Okay.
And it makes sense that Pelham would have approved them because that was the Pelham portion. But I don't, I don't really know that ma, that it makes sense for us to approve a portion of the minutes for our meeting.
Okay. I, I don't have any feelings about it. Sure. Any other? Okay. Uh, do you have the warrant or court?
I do, yes. Hopefully it's, oh, there it goes. So I, uh, William Scher, authorized by my signature in the amount of three hundred ninety-seven thousand four hundred twenty-eight seventy-five cents on seven twenty-four twenty-four. Includes general fund expenses of three ninety-six eight forty-two and forty cents, revolving fund expenses of five eighty-six and thirty-five cents. On six thirty twenty-two-four, I, William Scher, authorized by my signature payable in the amounts of fifty-five thousand eight hundred fifty-seven dollars and thirty-one cents. It includes, um, general funds and the expense of fifty-five eight fifty-seven thirty-one.
I have two.
Oh, I, I have more.
Oh, you have more.
Sorry, I'm not done. I have to open each one. I, William Scher, authorized by my signature in the amount of six hundred and seventy-five thousand four hundred twenty-one and four cents, dated on eight, seven, two thousand twenty-four, and that was for payroll. Oh, do I? Okay. Then I can't see. Sorry. Um, I, William Scher, authorized by my signature payable in the amounts of two hundred eighty-nine thousand two hundred twenty-five dollars and forty-five cents. It includes general fund expenses of two seventy-five, two oh-one and seventy-six cents, revolving fund expenses of thirteen thousand seven hundred ninety-seven, seven hundred ninety-two dollars and seventy-six cents, gifts of two hundred and thirty dollars and ninety-three cents. On eight, seven, twenty, two thousand twenty-four, I, William Scher, authorized by my signature payable in the amounts of six hundred and sixty-two thousand three hundred fourteen eighty-four cents. It includes general fund expenses of six sixty-one, two fifty-four and eighty-six cents, revolving fund expenses of seven hundred and sixty dollars and tailings of two ninety-nine ninety-eight. I, William Scher, authorized by my signature in the amount of six hundred fifty-four thousand eight hundred and thirty-three dollars and nine cents, dated on eight twenty-one, two thousand twenty-four, and that was for payroll. On eight twenty-one, two thousand twenty-four, I, William Scher, authorized by my signature payables in the amount of three hundred twenty-seven thousand nine hundred seventy-nine and thirty-two cents. It includes general fund expenses of a hundred and eighteen thousand five hundred twenty-nine dollars and thirty-two cents, revolving fund expenses of two hundred and seventy-five dollars. General fund, it says, debt expenses of two oh-nine one seventy-five. And that's all.
Uh, excuse me. On June twenty-eighth, two thousand four, I, Deb Leonard, authorized by my signature payables of the amount nine hundred and thirty-seven thousand one hundred and twenty-four dollars and ninety-four cents, which includes seven hundred and thirty-nine thousand nine hundred and thirty-five dollars and eighty-nine cents general funds, sixteen thousand eight hundred and thirty-three dollars ninety-six cents revolving funds, a hundred and fifty-nine thousand nine hundred forty-eight dollars and ninety-nine cents grant funds, nineteen thousand four hundred and twenty-nine dollars and ten cents gifts, and nine hundred and eighty dollars in capital. And on July tenth, twenty twenty-four, I, Deb Leonard, authorized by my signature accounts payable in the amount of two million one hundred and fifty-six thousand six hundred twenty-six dollars and fifty-six cents. Those were all general fund expenses. And it was, um, the end of the year closing out of payroll bills, orders and claims submitted for payment. That's all. That's all.
Excellent. Thank you both. Uh, so next is gifts, which we do not have any. Okay, and then um, for new and continuing business, the first item we have is a discussion around our committee self-assessment and retreat summary. So I have attached to board docs um, the summary from the retreat where uh, McPherson and Jacobson facilitated some great conversations. Um, and then we had an activity. Um, and these are the, the highlights from it, where we performed our self-assessment. And then additionally, I included in here uh, the other two documents that we used in our conversation. McPherson and Jacobson's Phase Five. Um, and also the roles and responsibilities of the uh, committee, school committees and superintendents. Sarah?
Yeah, I just want to note, for the folks who were not able to attend, and for the public, they're interested that uh, the great majority of the, of the discussion, and it was very fruitful, uh, uh, about the relationship between the committees and the superintendent, and that part facilitated by um, the search consultant. When we got to the committee's self-assessment, all we could do, all we had time to do is write notes on stickies and put them on categories. We haven't actually discussed that feedback at all. Right, am I, am I mis- misremembering, I mean, we, so, so these, these are statements. People stuck up under the, the heading communication with the public, or relationship with the superintendent, so um, we have, we have yet to talk about what, what we want to do with any feedback.
I was unable to attend the retreat, I think what I would have said if I had been there is that um, there's two parts that I've come across that I think are important. One is uh, the Budget Coordinating Group sponsored, that, that run through the town. Its charter has representatives of the Regional School Committee listed on it. I was unable to find any indication that there were Regional School Committees present at, on the Budget Coordinating Group, going back with their minutes, their minutes were not complete, but all the representatives I saw were members of the Amherst School Committee, so unless they were doing double duty, um, then I don't see how that could have happened, and I think it's relevant because there's been discussion in the community about whether or not the RSC has been forthcoming with the town in those meetings for which we were not represented, so I think that's something that should be discussed. What I found in this process is it's very difficult to find historic documents for this committee. Um, you know, you kind of have to go back a page at a time, document by document, I know we're short-staffed and I'm not asking anybody else to do it, but there's good studies that have been done, there's good reports that have been done. There's, between the turnover and in Central and the turnover on this board, I think there needs to be a way for us to find out what our history is in order to move forward into the future, and I'm not saying I know what that is, but um, finding things a piece at a time on board docs, I don't think is fruitful.
Thanks, Deb. Is there anyone else that wanted to? Okay. Okay, so we can move on to our next item, so um, we received previously a letter from the Amherst Town Council in the end of June. Um, and then yeah, yesterday, we received another uh, letter from the Pelham, Pelham Finance Committee. Um, and both, both of these uh, and conversations, um, we've been requested to have a four towns meeting in, yeah, I mean, originally it was requested in August, but that's, we don't have days to do that left. Uh, so it, in September, um, which I uh, I think at that point in our year, we can talk about our budgeting process, not what the actual final budget is going to look like. Um, I know Dr. Z has been working diligently, looking at the budget and looking at the budgeting process, um, which I think would be, if we were to have a four towns discussion in September, that's what it would be about. How we're going to look at things, what kind of information we're looking at, not the dollars and cents. It's, it's far too early um, to be, to be trying to make those guesses and be accurate enough to put that information up there. Uh, Anna?
You know, I, I agree that that's a good start. Um, I'm wondering if we want to set expectations about numbers. Um, both the Amherst and the Pelham letters refer to two-point-five percentage increases, which I personally feel is unrealistic for this coming fiscal year. Um, I understand where that's coming from, and I do want to try to get our budgets to be less inflative every year, but the constraints for this coming fiscal year, the fiscal year twenty-six are such that a two-point-five percent increase over fiscal year twenty-five is, would be extremely damaging to the district, and I don't want any of the towns to think that that's realistic, or that we will be actually trying to achieve only a two-point-five percent increase in our budget for the fiscal year twenty-six, I think we can have a different conversation about fiscal year twenty-seven, but due to the, the S R funds ending and not being able to carry that over into fiscal year twenty-six, um, and some other constraints that are occurring, I think a two-point-five percent increase from twenty-five to twenty-six is just, it's not realistic, and I want to sort of set that message right away, so that we don't get to passing a budget that the towns are like, we said two-point-five way back in July. And um, and to have them be expecting that we will actually achieve that this year.
Um, and I think the part that is critical that's being missed is the one times six percent um, increase. So technically, it wouldn't be a two-point-five percent increase. We would actually be at a deficit because they would take back that six percent, and so it would actually be a deficit that we would be starting at. Um, and realistically, I, you know, when we were doing the agenda planning, I figured that budget process is one way to start the conversation. Um, and if we heard what Tracy said this evening around the fact that we need to make sure we have district goals, like truly analyze where our district is, where is it going, where does it need to be? And, and for example, every week we've received at least one to two families that need special education services that have moved into the districts. So you know, that cost is increasing because they need one-to-one services, but we also heard this evening that special ed doesn't come with additional funding. And so that's something that's being incurred at the, at, in the districts right now, so we really need to present the full picture of the process, and also who's the population that we're serving.
Uh, Tilman?
I think it's important that we start talking about dollars and cents as soon as we can with the towns. We know what their expectations are based on the letters that they've written in that weird six percent counting that Amherst is doing. Um, my expectation is that the towns will have extremely little patience for us to explain anything academic of why we need more money. Hopefully they'll listen to us, but I'm not sure that, that, that they care about it. What they will care about is what is the percentage in the end. So the sooner we know what those numbers are and what the, what the dollar amount of cuts are that we have to make in order to get to whatever arbitrary percentage they have in their mind, we can have that conversation of saying, if we really do what you're telling us in your letter or by your expectations, this has gonna, is gonna have significant impact on the district. We don't need to know what exactly those impacts are, but we know that if we cut multiple millions of dollars from the budget, that there will be consequences. And we need to know what those numbers are as soon as we can, because otherwise we cannot have a conversation with the towns. They will just say, oh, we need, V one, pick your number, two and a half percent. And uh, and so the sooner we know what that number is, we need to tell the towns, this is what you're asking us to do, and you see what the impact is. Um, and so therefore, I think we should have this meeting and we should talk numbers.
Uh, Sarah?
Um, I continue to think we can hope for the best, but we should plan for the worst. Um, I don't want to go down to the wire, like in June, again, next year, um, and have the towns vote us down, and then have to figure out how to cut, I don't know what the number is. Two million, I don't know what the number is, I'm making it up, so don't anyone quote me. How to make, at that point, how to cut that much out of our budget, so I think we should have a sense of what that might mean. And because we, we need to be ready if that happens.
Uh, Earth?
It seems to me that we cannot wait um, beyond September. We need to really push hav, having the four towns meeting in September. Top of the agenda is the uh, proposition that Amherst is putting forward that starts us out with a deficit uh, from last year. We need to get that, we need, we need to have those conversations, especially with Amherst. Now, not, not, you know, I mean, really, there's, we don't even have to wait till the four towns are meeting to have those conversations with Amherst. Uh, but certainly, a four towns meeting that focuses on, here is what we expect to happen, budget-wise. We don't have the exact numbers, but we certainly know what the outline is. And how the towns then come together to deal with that. They may come together to deal with it as if, as two towns have already done, by sending us letters that sternly warn us to stay within our, our guidelines. So it seems to me, the cards are on the table, it's up to us to begin action right now. And so I, I really want us to walk away from this meeting, at least with some confidence that a four towns meeting is going to take place in September.
But it, um, I guess I just wanted to talk a little bit about the communication strategy, because now this is two communications we've had from the two towns, and at the last meeting, we talked a little bit about the fact that there's just, there's just uh, um, some misalignment of facts, both the historical facts, like if you look at the declining enrollments, there seems to be some assumption that we haven't all, so during the time of those declining enrollments, having very strong dramatically declining cuts in the teaching staff. So those numbers go down very much in, in sync, and so thinking about, oh, you should, the tone of the letter that just came was very similar in saying, well, you should, like having a sense like, oh, the school committee should be considering this, given the declining enrollments, but I think just having a communication strategy that's putting across really clearly, like, this is an ongoing process and we don't have room for dramatic cuts, our schools are running really thin, is the first piece. And then the second piece that I think that came up tonight, and um, even what um, Tracy Novak said about the S R funds and that school committees knew that they were running out, I think that misrepresents the fact that, in some ways, that S R three legally required that the money go to improving students' academic and um, mental health goals, and that would be a very hard thing to do, you know, through capital spending, through curriculum perhaps, but otherwise, no. So just like something, some way that the Subcommittee, I know they were working on a letter, I don't know what came out of that, but some way to be communicating back, so we're starting from a shared base of sort of like, understanding the facts, if that makes sense.
Thank you. Deb, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, uh, so many thoughts, um, one of them being, um, last year's budget was the first time I think our budget, the special education budget exceeded the general education budget. And I think that conversation needs to be had, because um, in terms of unfunded mandates, we are required by law to meet the special education needs of our students. And so um, I don't really know what that means in terms of two and a half percent versus three percent, but I think in the interest of efficiency, it is worthwhile having a clear and open conversation about what we actually need to fund, and what the rest of that money looks like, and what reductions in those areas look like, so that the community doesn't get blindsided in March, or April, or May, based on eh, eh, the constraints that we and our towns are operating under. I, I just, I, I look at the, the process that we went through for the track and field, and you know, there's option A, and there's option B, and there's option C. And without wanting to ask our finance department to generate multiple budgets, that's in the end what we, we ended up doing. I think it makes sense to have a clear and open conversation about what these different things look like, and what staying within that two and a half percent looks like, from uh, things that we can actually cut point of view. So I really think an important part bless you. of the conversation is communication with the community, because those people and we represent them. And eh, a part of their taxes go towards, um, go towards the things that we're making those decisions about. So I don't know how those pieces come together, but certainly one of the things Tracy has said over the many presentations I've listened to her, is about analyzing cost centers and looking at the ways in which we can project out our cost centers, and I don't have the sense that we did that the last time. You know, it just, eh, I, I was brand new, there's a lot going on, but it just seemed like those conversations we weren't having with, with the interim superintendent in a way that I could understand. And I'd like to change that process. I think, oh, and I guess I really want to just echo what Earth said at the end of Tracy's presentation. There's nuance, it's not, you, you, I, I get that you have to live within your means, but it's not that simple. And I, I really think that, that message needs to take place at many different levels in these conversations. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we will work to schedule a four towns September meeting. Okay.
Can, can I just ask, so that is likely to be, if it happens, one of the last two Saturdays? Are, are we assuming a Saturday? I, I mean, calendars are getting busy, do you have any suggestions?
I, yeah, I, I don't have any suggestions for dates and times just yet, I will, we'll work on that and get that information out as quickly as possible. I, I know the fall is, gets real thick real quick, so. Okay, so our superintendent has started talking about uh, goals for the upcoming. So our superintendent has started talking about uh goals for the upcoming school year.
I did. So I know that the three committees have to vote on the goals and honestly, when it says nice day as quickly as possible, it is already um the, it is September on Monday. And I really do not want to wait until November to get goals from the committees. Um, because these goals spiral into what the central office leadership will be evaluated on as well. And so I um, working with McPherson and Jacobson, um, they had given a official, a first draft of suggested goals based on phase five. Um, I looked back at the goals and yeah. And so what I did is based on the DESI rubric. Um, each goal is aligned to one of the standards. Um, and so, and it's tied to some of the critical work or the work that has already started. So under standard one, instructional leadership. Um, by June twenty twenty five, I'll lead the Amherst Pelham Regional Public Schools and complete a thorough assessment of the district practices. And administrative structure, it's there, so I'm not gonna read it. Um, and then three strategies. So each goal has three strategies of how the central office and the entire team will come together. Um, I've been telling everyone the priority statements. Uh, student safety and well-being, healing and stabilization of the district, and data and accountability for equity um, around our core values, accountability, respect, professionalism, and being student-centered. And so each one of the standards for DESI, um, I've used to align and create a goal. Um, the second goal is around enhancing district efficacy, um, efficiency, um, data management and equity. Um, the third is around family and community engagement. Um, again, healing and stabilizing the district while rebuilding trust. And then the fourth is establishes strong professional culture aligned with our core values and equity. And so I have brought these draft goals for the committees to start um, the conversations. And it's my hope that by at least the end of September, um, the, I can be like blessings and move forward. Um, and I did work to tie in the critical areas. So you'll see where there's conversations around finance, conversations around com- um, communication, um, conver- conversations or areas around district-wide training, um, the division of student services and the director of mental health. So everything that we talk around our priorities and our core values, that's what's here in the four um, goals established.
I just have a quick question on, so this is, as I see the cover is for Amherst Pelham, Amherst Pelham Regional. So I'm assuming that these four goals are the same for all?
Yes.
And so we may just, you may just wanna add like districts?
Okay.
Through your words possibly?
That's fine.
Uh, cause I, when I started reading it, I thought it was just the, just for the region. And then I realized it's for all of them.
That's fine.
But it sounds wonderful, so.
Thank you.
My first quick reads.
I had Anna, your hand was up next.
Yeah. So these look amazing. Um, I think all of these goals are terrific. What I would say is it also looks like a tremendous amount of work and these are kind of like two or three-year goals. I want you to be successful and I want to be able to say you were successful at the end of the year. And I'm I'm mildly concerned and I, you know, I am not going to prevent you from making these your goals. But if you want to like pare back just a little bit or make some like milestones, earlier milestones, just I I want, I want you to be successful and this just seems like a lot. And if you can do all of this in one year, I will be so impressed. It will be amazing. But, yeah.
And and so what I did was I built in the division goals into my goals. And so a lot of this, for example, on this one, enhance student safety and well-being. It says, I will collaborate with the Office of Student Services and the Director of Mental Health and Behavioral Services to develop and enforce comprehensive safety policies and procedures across all three, three districts. These policies will ensure the physical and mental well-being of every student. Some of this work has already started, cause it's their charge. So I I know it 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 reads like a lot to me too, but it it also, you know, the one thing I I consistently say, we are a team. It's not just about me. If they fail, I fail. And if I fail, they fail. And so everyone has a role. So it it also shows the school committee how as a team, the central office is going to work together to meet these goals. So it actually spans out to everyone's responsibility for what they're doing. But I will present it to them and and see if there's anything that they think to, they like to spiral back. I may push back because again, it's tied to what they're going, we're gonna do as a team.
Awesome. Uh, Sarah?
Thank you so much for this. Um, and it is, it is a lot. It's exciting and important work. But I haven't had a lot of time to reflect on it, so if you want to have the goals approved in a month, I guess, I don't know how we're, we're gonna have a larger discussion next month when we meet and vote on them right then. I I don't know how to make that work. But, so here's just a question, cause I had started reading, uh, under standard one, uh, strategy number two, I mean, that just, to me, that seems like the um management and operations, like what does that? I'm just, I wonder why that is under instructional leadership.
Which, which portion?
Number two.
I know. So.
Sorry, uh, yeah. The administrative structure and the organizational chart, I mean, that's all necessary, but why is it a strategy for instructional?
So, so let's talk about instructional leadership and Tracy hit on it a little bit in terms of assistant principals and principals in schools. Partner with Human Resources Division, I will evaluate the current administrative structure and organizational chart to identify areas where we can optimize roles and responsibilities for greater efficiency and effectiveness. When we're, and then the second one is I will provide professional development opportunities for administrators, focusing on setting SMART goals aligned with district priorities, promoting a culture of continuous improvement and shared leadership. Research states, and and I went over this in admin week. Research talks about the direct correlation of teacher to student when it comes to their learning, student success. The the most direct impact touch in terms of student success is a teacher, because they they're they're forward-facing, they're in the classroom. For a teacher to succeed, the school leader has to be strong in their instructional practices. If a principal is within their top seventy percent of their proficiency in terms of their instructional leadership practices, then you will see student growth, because then they are coaching, they are pushing, they are moving the teachers forward for them to succeed. And in turn, classroom instruction succeeds. So what this says is in year one, I am working with school administrators and building their practices so that they can in turn build and support their teachers in what they do in the classroom. So what the first bullet talks about, sounds like just a a regular org chart. But one of the things that every school leader had to submit to me last week, well, this week, was who is responsible for what in your schools? So look back at your school as a principal, and so now I have an org chart for the high school. The assistant principals are are responsible for this. The principals are responsible for this area. So now I I can come in as a superintendent, or even when the equity coach goes in and works with the principals around instructional leadership, because that's a two-pronged approach. Um, Tanya is gonna go in and support them in diversity, equity, belonging and instruction. I'm coming in to monitor and hold them accountable based on their goals for the school year. But I also need to know who's supporting what. That ties back to student achievement. If I'm seeing that the high school MCAS scores in mathematics are low, I'm having that direct conversation with assistant principal around instructional strategies. What's happening? What's your leadership strategies? So I hope that provides some clarity. It's not just about the org chart, but it's about how does instructional leadership directly correlate to student achievement?
I I I really appreciate that you've done this. It's A, B. Uh, we definitely need to vote on this after we have some time to consider it. And see that if we vote to go with these goals, or do we need to, or do we want to add additional goals? What is good about this is that it sets a course for the system and it sets some measurables. She's put out here pretty clearly what she wants to be measured on. And um, usually, uh, the school committee would say, hey, we have these goals and your objectives. Um, this gives us the opportunity to say, yes, these are the goals we agree, and we agree with them. Or we, or we wish to change them or add them, but when we come to a decision on it, this becomes the standard of measurement we we have for Dr. Z in in June.
Uh, Dan?
I haven't had a chance to read it at all. I'm sorry. Um, and I do see a path forward to voting on September twenty fourth. If we ha- if we read them and discuss them on the tenth and we vote on the twenty fourth, I I don't see that as a problem. Um, and I'm, I I guess my first question is something that you mentioned in in your first regional, regional meeting about um, readjusting your entry plan based on?
It's on my update for tonight, when we get to that part.
Okay, so that fits in with this?
Yes.
Okay, number one, that's great. And then um, one of the things that I think is important to address going forward is um absenteeism, both with staff and students and um, learning loss from COVID. So I don't know if you, yeah.
Yeah, you're on it. Okay.
That's all I got.
Jennifer?
Um, I had similar concerns to Anna, and that like, this seems like a lot. But it was developed by you, and I would imagine you pu- put forward something that you think is achievable. If there were any one thing that I would say maybe you could pare down, it would be the weekly podcast, which I think is a great idea. And I love the 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 fact that you want to communicate, you don't wanna have a direct line with the community. But weekly seems like a lot, like you have a lot to do in a week and just to set aside time. I don't know how long a podcast you're thinking, but I would urge you to like, keep it short, but also maybe not weekly. And also, the idea of of um, having an accessible multiple languages is also fantastic, but also something else that takes a lot of work. And I know that translating written material is different from interpreting spoken word. So anyway, just think about, maybe like, I would think in in my view, anyway, that would be lower down on the priority list. Just some input for you.
Okay. Um, so I would say, one of the things that I did um, as deputy superintendent, and then when I became interim superintendent in the Virgin Islands, is I did the weekly radio program every Saturday. Um, and so that helped for, it was an hour. Um, you know, and so that helped to kind of communicate and keep that message going. Um, my new media and climate specialist has already cut me down, cause I thought it was like an hour. He's like, no, thirty minutes. And um, already broke, broken it out. And so what I will commit to the committee is my next S P C meeting is September fourth. Um, and then I believe that's a Wednesday? So that's a Wednesday, and then after that, I have each of the committees right after that. My superintendent planning council, which is all the people that will have to get their work done in in these goals. So I will um, present the goals to them, ask them for any additional, cause they're the next step. And they know their their job is to keep me off of landmines. They know that very clearly and they do it very well. And so ask them if there's anything that they feel should be spiraled back or shifted or changed. Um, and then I will resubmit the the draft to all of the committees um, so that we can have it voted on by the end of September. So I will definitely, definitely do that and then give them the opportunity to build their goals off of what's there.
This is not the Amherst School Committee, so all I wanted to ask is, are the principals of the elementary schools part of this S P C or part of the?
No, they're part of, they're part of the dilt. However, right, however, they will be evaluated this year. So DESI has set. Um, and so the individuals who have already received the rubric that I will be evaluating them on is the S P C, is is the directors for, um, so the business directors, the, and I did too, there's an operational rubric. And then there's an academic rubric, so everyone has their rubric that they'll be, but they're waiting on my goals and strategies so that they can build theirs for the, for the year.
Excellent. Jennifer?
Just a last quick question. So the contract that we signed with McPherson and Jacobson said that they had this guarantee that if our, if we, if we hired a superintendent and that person didn't last for two, for two years, they would redo the search first for free. Of course, that's not gonna happen. A precursor to that is that they have to be involved in setting the the goals. And so I know you talked to them, and I I missed their presentation, but like, have they blessed this process and are, like, are we in compliance with the contract? Maybe that's more a question for Sarah Best.
So I can, cause Sarah Best asked me. Um, I did my initial meeting with with Ralph and Candace. I checked on them, I revised them. I was supposed to send them back, so they will also be in the review process. I'll send them back. But what I will do is after the S P C reviews them, I'll send them back to to Ralph and Candace, and then I'll send them to the committees.
Great, thank you.
Bridget?
It's just a really small thing. I love how equity is woven through the last three goals. And I know very much so how much it plays into instructional leadership as well. But just if you mentioned it in there somewhere, I'd be really happy.
Definitely will notice it.
Okay. Superintendent's update.
Um, so we're gonna pull up the PowerPoint and I am going to be very honest. I'm gonna zip through this and hit critical points. And um, I think one of the key things is we are trying to make sure we are student-focused and centered. And it's been a busy um couple of weeks since we last met, so uh, definitely that is setting the tone. That is me and my wing girl, um, at convocation. And so it was an exciting time. I would like to start off by thanking the committee members that showed up and sat through. Um, Jennifer, Sarah Best, and William, thank you so much. Um, and then Sarah Marshall, I know we had a deep discussion before, and so thank you guys as well, Irv as well. So um, our district priorities, student safety and well-being, healing and stabilization of the district, and data and accountability for equity, um, sounded, it continued to to resonate wi- with me, with the district, um, with the staff, and so we continue to push forward. And as you can see, I'm there with Sparky, so it's wonderful. Safety comes first. Um, so our overview, I'm gonna go through first days of school, convocation, budget update, and my entry plan revisions. Um, it has been an exciting first day of school and it was a whirlwind tour. Um, the S P C team, uh, the central office team and myself, we started at the middle school, welcoming students as they came off of the school bus into school. Um, from there, we went to the regional high school. I wanna point out, there's a picture, and I don't know if my, there it is. This picture right here, this young man. Um, I met him right here in this high school library when I came in April to do the um, interview process. He sat in the student group with Julian. And um, and I saw him walking in the halls and he's like, hey, um, how are you? And I had the conversation with him and I said, I got the job. And he's like, yeah, I see, you know? Um, and he's a senior now. He's really into sports and it was really great spending time in the high school that day. From there, we went to Summit Academy. We welcome students in. Um, and so the tour continued to Wildwood. Um, just engaging, wishing the um, principals and assistant principals a great first day. Sitting with students, asking them what they were learning. The students at Wildwood in the one class were actually talking about leadership qualities. And the group that I'm sitting with, they were, they had that a leader should be honest. And I said, do you think all of the time? And they said, well, not when you have to say something really bad, like if you don't like someone, something that someone did. Like if you don't like the book that they wrote. I said, well, there's always a way to tell someone that they can improve. You don't have to be mean about it, but you can be honest and say, hey, I think some things that you can improve. So it was really a great first day. Where at Wildwood, they were actually focusing on the strategies and and traits. But in the region, our three schools were up and running. The middle school was great. The staff was to the front. Bright shining faces. Um, and so there were a lot of things. It's first day of school, so there were first day of school quirks um, that happened, um, with some busting and transportation, but we were able to rectify that with Five Star. And so these are the other schools that we serve. Um, and so we definitely will be there. Convocation was Friday, August twenty third. The theme this year is together we grow, together we shine. Um, there was a school spirit roll call. All of the schools came out. NiB did an excellent job. Thank you to NiB in planning convocation. NiB did an excellent job, thank you to NiB in planning convocation. And making sure, we had a wonderful keynote speaker, Dr. Robert Peterson of Successful Practices Network. Um, and it's so funny because we did not plan a thing, but my opening remarks kind of mirror what he talks about in terms of building relationships, setting the tone, knowing your why. I want to express a great thank you to our key stakeholders. Um, since taking this seat between Amherst College and UMass, they have been so great with their donations of space, their donations of time, of just resources. And I know a lot of times individuals have been talking about the money that can be given, but we have to know that time is money as well and so is a location. And so definitely thank you to UMass who provided us a free location to have our convocation. And so, you know, we're building, we're taking advantage of those relationships. And again, togetherness is a theme for this year as we build and we we gave out wellness days to staff. We did raffles, um, we you gave a reading corner, um, which is basically some inflatable chairs and a table. But you know, teachers, they love things. And so it was really great to have that and we had a DJ who kept the party going. So it was a really a great opportunity. Um, budget update, I know in the last one Jennifer expressed that one of the standing things on the superintendent's update is a budget update. Critical thing that happened, we did meet with, and I did express that I wanted to bring in outside auditors to go through the budgeting process. We have identified a vendor and we're hoping for the work to start very soon in terms of the budgeting process as well as primarily starting with the payroll process. And looking at the accountability, as we've been going through, I've had a series of questions, not just on our local budget, but also how we federally, what we, what were the plans for ESTER? What was the transition? Where are we with the gaps? How are we filling that out? Um, there are a series of concerns. And so for us, that was my suggestion, that the first thing be on the budgeting process. Um, we also need to know where we are going and where we need to be. We need to understand what our programming is going to look like before we can adequately talk about the numbers that we have. Um, we know that our special education numbers are rising, but our funds are not rising. The needs are evident based on the IEPs that we have to meet. And so right now, the staff is, we're having the option A, option B, option C conversations. Um, I have, and I'm going to be very honest, kind of put a free, a pause on hiring individuals that are not student-centered or student-supporting positions that align to the priorities or to where we need to go. And so for example, an individual that may support the director of mental health and behavioral services so that we can address our Title IX concerns, address our OCR investigations, address our bullying investigations. Last year we ended with over two hundred open bullying cases not addressed. That can't happen under my watch and that will not happen this year. And so support is needed to address that. However, we're also looking at alignment and we've started various conversations around positions that are coming in because I do not want to be the person that has brought individuals on, they've shifted their livelihood for a salary and then we're talking about the seniority clauses, who needs to go home. And so we're having critical conversations on on whether or not positions are vital to the functionality of the district and is it something that we can, you know, do without or look at how we can use a position that we already have to meet that need. So that's where we are in terms of of the budgeting. But we have identified an individual to come in and and review our processes, look at our payroll processes and the finance audit to to make sure that we are where we need to be so we can have those critical numbers conversations. I do also want to say that we are, we did not ident, I cannot say that we identified the buckets correctly. Um, and that's a lot of my questions and and that's one of the things where I think that the buckets are not where it needs to be, where we can say this is specifically an operational cost or a budget and an estimate. Um, and this is what it should cost to operate this section. So that, those are questions that I have when it comes to the regional budget. Honest, I'm I'm being very honest. I have a list of questions that I asked repeatedly and those are things that 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 we need to clearly do for the upcoming budgeting process. Um, entry plan updates, it's still leading with love, listen, learn, engage, articulate and deliver. Um, and so some of the critical things I want to go through real quickly is, and it's in, the vision is always to be student-centered, make sure we have a district where every learner is engaged in educational experiences and again pushing their fullest potential. And so I wanted to say, pre-entry, we've done a lot, a lot, um, since coming in. And in July, having one-on-ones, um, having, you know, critical hires, identifying the specific priority statements, what are our core values, um, pushing the the and prioritizing diversity, equity and really healing. And so held listening sessions, conducted one-on-one meetings. I still have, I have not, haven't had the opportunity of meeting with each of you one-on-one, but I have met with many of you one-on-one and so you're gonna be getting contacted from NiB saying, hey, we need some time in your calendar to have those one-on-one meetings if you haven't already contacted me. Um, we started a review of assessment data. Um, we've started, we have already worked to identify. And so what's gonna be rolling out is our parent and community survey, um, as well as our staff surveys should be going out this week. And to start collecting feedback from the parents and communities around the, where they see us going, what do we do well and what are areas that we still need to improve upon. In the entry phase, continue collecting and doing listening sessions, um, meeting with the, um, school PGOs, um, having additional, walking through schools and and observing what's happening with instruction, observing what's happening with leadership. Um, so this is all different metrics and so we definitely, I will formalize this more to submit, but this is where we are in updating that plan and then moving straight into strategic planning. And again, making sure that we take all of that data, synthesize it and and bring it into one where we can present a district improvement plan for the for the districts and for the district so that then we know what we are moving towards. Um, there's a lot of conversation around, and I'm gonna come straight to the end. There's a lot of conversation around, and I heard it around the the trajectory, are are we matching the staff to our student population? That's one question that I haven't had answered yet because, you know, are we looking at what our ratios are? So all of that needs to really be delved into because we are keeping staff in place, but our numbers in terms of our students may not match the staffing that we currently have. And so we may need to look at how do we adequately staff as well as are we projected to have increased enrollment and and what's happening in those areas? And so this is ARPS, um, this was the first day of school and we are highlighting whether it's our students, whether it's our staff and we just had various conversations and it's been a wonderful few weeks. And so and it's been a wonderful two days in the ARPS Regional School District. So thank you and if anyone is watching, that is our QR code for our community survey that will be rolling out.
Excellent. Okay, Jennifer?
I have a few questions. So regarding the twenty-four, twenty-five budget that for this current year, like we all went through a lot in the months before you began, before you began with getting that budget approved. But I don't, I don't know if you answered this, I couldn't really tell, we don't, I don't think we've ever really heard what ended up happening with the the with the six, like we had four percent, even then we landed on six percent like, and then we kept asking the previous superintendent, like what actually are the cuts that are gonna be made? And we hadn't gotten any, I don't think gotten any answers, I'm not sure if that's what you were saying. What can you tell us?
What I can tell you is in our July meeting, I think I presented and I I it should have been one of the attachments in my slide show, I think I presented a, or I got an Excel with some suggested positions um, that was cut to include the central office and then what was put back. So I did get that Excel, um, I can share that Excel with the committee. Um, what I will say too is that it's being spoken about in FTEs versus specific positions that were cut, which which presents as confusing versus saying these are the specific positions that are cut. Um, I think that for the upcoming year, we need to put the budget in jargon that everyone will understand that equates to a person versus the hours or percentages that are worked. Um, but that also goes with the nuances of our regional budget where a lot of individuals are not full-time. If if you, and honestly and truly, and they sit in critical positions where they are not full-time. So that in itself is one of the conversations, why we have to really go through a clear assessment before we present numbers, because we have to talk about what that shift is going to look look like. If a person is sitting in a leadership role and is point eight percent of the time, right? Um, we also, what is that calculated cost if we have to shift to a full-time? What's the need that's there? Um, is it something that works for the region at this time? And so, no, there is not a clear picture of what positions. Um, I know, for example, an add-back I think was, but it it wasn't, it it was a position that was cut, which was the restorative justice position, but then it was put back in under a different title. So like there's, there's different things that were, that happened in that regard in terms of being clear that what was cut, but then what was put back? So what was put back may not be the title that was cut, but it is a position that may have been needed.
I have other questions, but you can put me at the end of the queue.
Okay. Done.
Yeah, and then there's the adjustments to the actual budget based on the the what actually went through the Massachusetts process, what the governor signed. So there's yet another.
Iteration has to come forward, yes.
Uh, Anna?
Sort of related to Jennifer's question, um, I think one of the questions that was sort of like top of the list was what happened to the world languages program? Um, the proposal that that we last heard was to move the middle school languages program to an every other day for both seventh and eighth grade. And I'm just wondering if that is what actually happened or if something different happened?
I will definitely get that answer for you. Um, because there are some questions that were asked prior to me arriving. Um, I do know that even some of the conversations that we've had and I've had with HR around this is looking at what districts around us are doing when it comes to hard-to-hire areas or even hard-to-replace areas like rural languages. Um, Ms. Ortiz has identified through DESI that there are online providers in different areas um, that are virtual teachers, but I would have to, I don't not, I I I'm big on character and integrity. I'm not gonna sit here and say, I know what happened to those rural languages positions. What I will tell you is I will get that update for you and and be able to answer that.
Uh, Tillman?
Towards the end of your presentation, you said that you're assessing the appropriate level of staffing for the current enrollments. Um, I think there's a corollary to that, which is figuring out the appropriate levels of staffing for the given budget.
Yes.
So, um, the the point I'm trying to make is, um, we don't want to go down a road where expectations are raised in terms of additional positions because the budget situation is dire and it's probably ever gonna go the other direction um, so that there's not a big discrepancy between what people hope for and what can actually be achieved.
We also have to think about what we've agreed to in terms of student-to-teacher ratios. And so, you know, those are critical conversations that we would have to look at as well in terms of negotiations and where they sit. So those are also things that I'm looking at, like what is the actual student-to-teacher teacher ratio that's been established within the district and are we meeting that ratio? And if we're not, or if we're exceeding it, like for example, if the ratio is twenty-two in an elementary class to one teacher and you end up with forty-five students, you technically are over what that ratio is supposed to be. So I understand what the budget is asking for. I also know we have to be mindful of what we've agreed to. And and also in, for example, in the fort, what does spacing allow, right? Because honestly and truly, um, we still have to have the conversation about the relocation of sixth grade. And I know that that is, you know, something that needs to happen in terms of when we're looking at spacing. So I'm, I I I I know we're looking at budgets, but we also have to look at what the realistic picture is that we are serving and who we are serving as a region. What is it gonna take to adequately run a middle school, to adequately run a high school, to adequately run Summit, like what what's gonna happen at the region? And and budgetary budgetary-wise, how are we going to, what's what is it going, what's that impact going to be? So that for me is step one. What do we add, what what is the real picture to run the region? And then taking that and saying, okay, minus this, this is what we have to run the region. What's the impact? Where can we do creative things with and where can't we?
Bridgette?
So I I appreciate Tillman's question and I think it's important that like as we're moving, we're thinking about fiscal year twenty-six, but I still have like some backward-facing questions about fiscal year twenty-five. And I guess my real question is, given the difference between what we voted on in June and then what the state receipts actually bring in, like how will we, how and when will we vote on the use of these funds? Unless it's gonna stay within the cost centers that we agreed to, then maybe we don't need to take another vote. But if the, for example, we voted as a committee, um, to put back money to the teaching positions. And so if we were gonna move in a different direction than that, that would be something we need to vote on. But if we weren't, if it were, if you're just gonna put the money back there, my guess is that's not something we need to vote on. So I'm just thinking about those questions that that we're having integrity to the process of what we voted for before and also realize like you're coming in new and you might have new ideas about how to use it. So if and when that's the case, how to bring it back to us.
I would just like to know what, I I know based on what I do know is that the vote was, if there is any money to go back, it should go back to student-facing positions. Again, for me, when I look at the budget, it it really just is a, I'm gonna say a bulk, like it says personnel, you know? And so again, looking at student-facing, what does that mean? How do we do that? So I think we could commit to having that conversation and how do we support that? And then what are the critical, like what did the committee identify as the priorities in terms of, because everyone has a different priority, whether it's the arts, whether it's the sports, um, you know, what that is? And so that is a critical conversation that we can come back and have. I do agree.
Uh, Jennifer?
Uh, okay, I have two questions hopefully. Um, given all the budget stuff for both this year and next year, I'm trying to keep my question high level. It's about our finance department and budget office, is that fully staffed?
I would say that their office is in the central office, not just the budget and finance office that needs, um, support. I am right now, what I'm calling, what I'm calling like an audit, like a review of, um, three divisions, the mental health and behavioral services, the budget office and HR, looking at what they need, um, looking at what they have, looking at aligning roles and responsibilities um, and asking some very critical questions. And I actually feel like if we were able to close the superintendent's update, I think your high-level question could possibly be answered as well.
All right. So next up is future, oh, yep, you have a.
Sorry. So I know, we've talked about this in the past, I do believe there is gonna be a new bullying reporting system?
Yeah, it it's launched.
It is launched?
Yes.
Okay. So then I'll I'll ask that at the future agenda.
So moving into future agenda planning.
When we're talking about staffing, one of the things our community is very concerned about is, um, representation of of staff of color. So that's a statistic we'll want, when you're pulling all of that together, that's a statistic that would be important for us to be able to communicate with the community about.
Okay, I will be honest that we need to be better at centralizing our data. And so, but I will work with the HR office to to get as much demographic data as we can of our staff.
Thank you.
Future agenda.
Could we have a presentation about the new bullying platform form to fill out the new program at a future meeting?
Yes.
Thank you. And then we need to have policy on the future meeting so we can wrap those policies up.
Definitely.
Yes, uh, Jennifer?
Um, I appreciate Deb mentioning that the Amherst Town Charter indicates that the budget coordinating group is supposed to have a representative from the regional school committee. So can we talk about that at a future meeting? Talk about, uh? Talk about selecting someone to be that person, and we can look at the, what the charter says.
Budget coordinating group, BCG.
In addition, regarding the superintendent's goals, I, it's just my feeling that anything that the three school committees will need to vote on jointly could be joint meetings. Since there's a significant overlap, and that way we don't have multiple committees with multiple versions of a document.
Tillman?
I Googled the budget coordinating group, and it says that Bridgette Hines and Irv Rhodes are representatives until January 2nd, 2025.
But not of the Amherst School Committee?
Yeah, yeah, I'm looking at the.
Yep. We can.
It's a school committee, it's not clear, sorry.
No, it is.
So this is Amherst School Committee, so there's no regional representative?
Well, we haven't, as a committee, chosen someone.
Yeah, we can, we can have more conversation about it when we have it agendaed.
Yeah, okay.
Yep.
Update on the track and field? For the future.
Future, yes.
Any other requests? If you, yep, Sarah?
I, I think, and I only think I know this because I've got it on a future agenda for the Amherst School Committee. Do we need to pass the handbook for the regional schools? Heard we do need to vote on them every year, so.
We do, but they're still under legal review, we haven't received it back yet.
Okay, so when it's done?
We're, yeah, we're.
Yeah.
All right. If you think of anything else, please feel free to email me. Are you excitedly having a memory of something you wanted to add to our agenda?
I'm moving to, is it too soon?
Yes.
Okay, sorry.
So our next item is to consider entering into executive, sorry Deb, session. The Amherst Palom Regional School Committee will now consider entering executive session in accordance with Open Meeting Law M A G L C 30A, Section 21A. Purpose three, to discuss, discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. A P E A U L P dated 8/9/24, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect to the bargaining or litigation position of the public bodies. And the chair declares, and I do declare, with no intent of returning to open session.
Second.
I think we have to roll call vote.
I have a question though. Can we know more about what's going on before we vote? There's, there's nothing more can be said about it?
Nope.
Okay.
Anna?
Yes.
Bridgette?
Yes.
William?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Irv?
Yes.
Tillman?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Sarah Bass? Yes, so that is nine to zero to zero. We are in executive session with no intent to return. Thank you all for coming tonight.